Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, March 11th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, never be beaten, just as a small girl.
Evening, Mr. Culliken. Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Absent.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Six present.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. Considering except the town council minutes of Monday, February 25th, 2019. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Steves.
A couple of things here. Under Agenda item number 24, I personally would rather see solar farms referred to as solar arrays because they are not farms. Item was opposed to a later date was actually proposed, postponed indefinitely. And we'll, and I know that we have to bring it up later. I noticed you put it on the agenda and we, just for the sake of Robert's rules, we do need to actually move to reconsider. And that's not specifically phrased there. Also, under item number 27, it doesn't mention the fact that I stated that EHS voted not to support the listings $15,000 for coordinator on the grounds that there was no legal entity essentially to do it. It also states here at the last sentence says Counselor suggested, Counselor something suggested amended, suggested amending the motion to read. It should be, I don't even know who that was, so.
On what page?
It's on page number five, under Agenda item number 27, the big paragraph. It says Counselor somebody suggested amended. Somebody suggested amending. I don't know, I don't remember who did it.
If you would, I, I don't remember. Attorney Attorney, you now has consent to postpone these since the regular recording clerk is not here tonight. So if you could forward those changes, so she would have better flavor of what transpired during that meeting.
Okay.
If you could forward that to him.
Okay.
The unanimous consent.
Okay.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on March 5th.
Have to speak up, I know you're sick, but.
I'll try. We had Agenda, we had a meeting on March 5th. Item numbers 11, 12, 13, 14, and 25 were on that agenda. And we, so I'll get those issues when we get to that point. We also talked about, and did make a recommendation on the Mullins rule. It didn't make it to the agenda, so if you could put it on the next, the next council meeting, I'll send you the way we actually phrased it. But we ended up voting to recommend approving the Mullins rule changes with a variety of specific, specific requirements. And as I said, I will send them to you. All the other items, I'll bring up when we get to them.
Thank you.
And we do have a meeting for next Monday at 6:30.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor DePietro is not here. The items, I'll speak to them as they come up. As I did take minutes for those, we'll discuss them as they come up. I do not believe he has a meeting scheduled. Education and Human Services, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had one meeting scheduled in the past two weeks, and that meeting was postponed due to the weather. It's been rescheduled for Wednesday this week, and there'll be a couple of appointments on the agenda, as well as a presentation by the receiver from the Southbridge Public Schools. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Planning Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We did not have a meeting this past few weeks. I do plan on having another meeting here in the near future. It'll be discussing airport and economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection of persons and property. Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We, there's a meeting scheduled for March 19th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Chairman's announcements, I do not have any announcements right now. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of announcements. One is from Anna Smith, who's our landfill monitor agent. I'd just like to read it. I sent it to the counselors and put it on Facebook, but I want the public to know about this. The week of March 4th marked the first week of rejecting recycling toters for excessive contamination. Chief Normanan was kind enough to put a non-emergency message on the citizens' alert system regarding this action to add to other education that has been done. We appreciate it. To date, close to 900 green oops tags have been placed on containers. Twenty recycling toters were rejected last week for excessive contamination. The main contaminator continues to be plastic bags. Overall, we are seeing a reduction in the contamination and appreciate the effort that's given out by all citizens. Just want to stress again, the plastic bags you would get at the grocery store, any plastic bag, the reason it's a problem is that when the materials go to a recycling center, those plastic bags get tangled up in the sorting machines. And that's a major, major problem at the recycling center. So, I want to stress very carefully that we need to be careful with all the recyclables. Make sure they're appropriate, and go onto the Southbridge Town website, under the Health Department, you'll be able to find all the information about what should and should not be recycled. But be very cautious as it relates particularly to those plastic bags. Police and fire union negotiations are going on. We're in the middle of negotiating both union contracts, and I want to publicly thank both union teams and negotiating teams have been great in terms of putting forward proposals that are reasonable. And I'm very confident that the end, the town will be able to reach agreement with both the police and fire department. So, I think that was very, very good. Many citizens may know, or some citizens may know, we're in the process of looking at the potential of hiring a new vendor for our water, wastewater sewer treatment plant. We are in that process. I want to particularly thank Counselor Nash for his involvement in that. I sent town counselors a schedule as to this process, and I think most of you should have received this in your emails either today, I think it was there yesterday. But we are trying to get a new contract for either the existing vendor, depending upon if they're selected, or a new vendor completed by 8-2 of 2001, well, yeah, 8-2 of 2019 is the plan. So, right now, we're in the process of getting ready to put it out for bidding. And that, the plan is to happen from 5-1 to 2019 to 5, oops, I'm sorry, let me say this again. The advertised the project at 3-27, 2019, advertising it until 4-17, 2019. So, we'll be looking for companies that will run wastewater treatment plants to be able to bid on that project. And usually what we do is we select the lowest bidder that meets all the qualifications that we put in the RFP. So, the good news is that that project is moving forward. I want to thank Heather and Matt for their hard work and their involvement in that, and I think things are going well. We are currently in the budget process, everyone knows. We finished reviewing all the budgets. Right now, Karen is kind of putting together the final package with all the revenue streams, as well as the expenses, and at the end of March, we'll be presenting that budget to the full town council. The six-year capital plan is effectively done as well. The last part I'm working on that is deciding the free cash allocation. As people may know, we use free cash, which is one-time revenue to the town, to purchase one-time capital purchases. And that's one of the things that we're working with all the department heads, to get a plan to make sure that we purchase the capital items that we need and not have to go out to borrow money, which is a lot cheaper if we can do it within free cash instead of having to go borrow money for capital items. And that's all I have tonight to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Presentations, tonight we have the fire station building feasibility study by the Fire Station Building Committee and Representative Castle Bose. I'm going to recuse myself from the dais and turn the gavel over to Counselor Steves as I serve as the chairman of that committee as well.
Thank you, counselors. Counselor Steves, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo, my fellow counselors, residents. Pleased to be here tonight to discuss and present to the council for further consideration the feasibility study that was conducted of the current fire station. First, just want to give you a little rundown of how this came about and how long this has been going on. There was a prior fire station committee that was not exactly sure of the exact date of when it was formed, but it was well before the year of 2000. The prior committee consisted of former counselor, the elder counselor, Laurent McDonald, Alfred DePietro, George Senja, Thomas Smolars, Steve Brady, Joseph Sugda, and Lieutenant Joseph Hewlic. The fire chief at the time was Lenny Laporte. That committee met, and according to the records that we could find, the limited records that we could find, had done a study that was presented to the Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee sometime in the year of 2002. Back then, there was a request for proposal to prepare building use and future needs analysis for the Southbridge Fire Station facilities. And in their words, when they posted this request for proposal, it stated that this Victorian-style building was built in 1899 and is listed on a National Historic Register. That request for proposal, when it was drafted, was drafted by acting town manager, Michael Stevens, in 1999, who served as the police chief and was serving as the acting town manager. On August 14th of 2000, a contract between the town of Southbridge and McGinley Hart and Associates LLP was executed for the feasibility study. Unfortunately, that company is no longer in existence, and we cannot find any of the official records of that feasibility study. However, we do have a newspaper article that does document the fact that it did come before the PPP. In September 26th of 2001, the USDA gave preliminary approval of a USDA project to be used for the renovation of 17,415 square feet of the existing station, which was constructed in 1899, as well as the construction of 16,325 square feet for an addition to the station, as well as a purchase of a fire truck. Also, that USDA letter, also at that time, gave approval for the construction of a new DPW building at the time that they were looking at, in the amount of $3 million, which they had plans to build a $3 million project. As we all know, as this council is aware and the residents of the town are aware, the town did not go down that road, bought an existing facility, and is now upward of $12 million in cost when they estimated $3 million back in 2000. The article in the Telegram Gazette written by Harold Gushu states that the feasibility study was presented, and at that time, Chief Laporte was amazed at the cost to build this facility. And I think as we present our study tonight, now 20 years later, we're equally amazed at how much it's going to cost. At the time, in 1999, several of the issues that we are going to present tonight were still there. One of the concerns that we have in one of our proposals is the tower behind the fire station, which still remains an issue if we do one of the projects. At the time, none of the counselors debated the needs to improve the station. Approximately 17 years ago when this was presented, or 19 years ago when it was presented to the council, no one debated the need to improve the station. However, they did state that we needed to build a new middle school, high school, a DPW building that needed to be purchased and retrofitted, which was done. So, if we take a look at all the town buildings, the studies that have been conducted through the school system as to school facilities, our police department, there's no doubt that the fire station is the last building in town that needs to be addressed. In 2016, I'll actually back up. In 2015, acting town manager Kevin Pecos was approached by several residents, including myself at the time, not on the council and not on the school committee, just to press to see where we were going with this fire station. Because like everything, or not everything, but some things in town, we develop plans and we just sit on them and we don't follow through. So, we were pushing to say, what's the status of this fire station building committee? Can we get it going? We know the needs are there. What do we need to do to continue to study and come up with a plan? Acting town manager Kevin Pecos eagerly and welcomed us to study, to reinvigorate the committee, sent out letters to the existing members, two who have, who had passed away, so they were no longer with us. And out of that group, Lieutenant Joseph Hewlic and John Sugda remained on the committee. Also appointed to the committee at the time was myself, former counselor David Landervan, former counselor Kathy Nocoler. And when we talked about how we wanted the committee made up, we wanted to model it as to how the state does with school building assistance, that we incorporate a building official from the town and the department head, and whoever that individual was would be slotted in that space. So, at that time, the director of inspections, Nick Tortis, who since has retired, is now that slot is held by Casey Burlingame. Fire chief Mark DeFranzo, who resigned and left the town. And what we did was moved Deputy Chief Hewlic to the chief slot and appointed, recommended and had appointed Captain Matthew of the fire department to have one of the floor firefighters on. So, in 2015, we organized and talked about the status of what had gone on beforehand and how could we go about this project. In 2016, the town manager employed a building municipal facilities evaluation and management plan. It was no surprise at that time, when that plan was presented to the town, that the two facilities that weren't rated in poor, well, three facilities, airport maintenance hangar, which has been addressed, the animal shelter, and the fire station. This was in June 17th of 2016, approximately three years ago. We talked about what we're going to do, the history of the prior work, and then with that, Deputy Chief Hewlic and Chief DeFranzo attended a fire station design conference to come up with best practices of how we go about building the station. That was in 2015. Approximately that time, current town manager Ron Sanangelo came aboard. We had approached him about getting some money for doing the feasibility study. That year, there was no funding available. We reached out to Senator Fatman, Representative Durant for funding. They were unable to secure any funding for a feasibility study. In 2016, or 2017, town manager, through the fire department, put into the capital plan the ability for us to go out to the facility study. So, December 14th of 2017, we selected Castle Bose after an interview process using the design selection phase, interviewed approximately four vendors, five had qualified with their bids that were submitted. The review panel included, and I have to say, thank you very much, utmost thanks, and I've said it before, to Matt DeJardins from the DPW, who provided invaluable assistance to us in developing the request for proposals. Castle Bose was selected. We kind of had an aggressive timeframe at the outset as to getting the study completed. Through the process, we did slow it down. You know, the town manager had thought about getting it on a ballot in June of 2018, but there is no way that we are prepared to get this to the ballot even to this date, because we need a lot more discussion once this plan is presented. By no means has the Fire Station Building Committee selected a location yet. This is the study, this is the presentation from the firm that we selected, to identify solutions and what some of the options are. So, we kicked off in February 2018, and now here we are a year later with our presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Hewlic, because really, this process, and I've seen some comments out there, that we should let the experts do this, while the fire department is the expert when it comes to fire department programming. The goal of the citizens on our committee, and I know my goal as chair, was to facilitate the process so that we could keep it moving. But this was really the study done with the fire department, having a study of what needs are for how fire departments currently operate and how we're going to go in the future. And I'll leave that to Deputy Chief Hewlic for the presentation. And then afterwards, if you have any questions, we'll answer any questions. So, I'll turn it over. Also with us tonight is Mike McKeon from Castle Bose, as well as Chief Normanan. So, Deputy Chief?
Counselors, Mr. Manager, thank you for letting me present this evening, residents as well. If you don't know me, my name is Joe Hewlic. I live at 395 Morris Street, and I am the deputy fire chief. So, the presentation that we have tonight, I apologize if you have to turn around and look at the presentation from the other direction, but we'll try and explain it as much as possible. So, Castle Bose made this presentation to us a few weeks ago to the committee, and now we're making a little bit more in-depth presentation for the council and for the community as So, the first part to this process was a programming phase and to have a needs assessment for what our department needs for spaces, what our department uses for operational plans, and how that would be affected in the future with a new facility or renovating the existing facility. One of the major factors that we deal with at this point is the app, the space. Obviously, as Chairman Jovan explained, this building was built in 1899. So, at that point in time, you had horse-drawn carriage, steam pumps, things of that nature. And obviously, we've seen many changes in the fire service since that time. What this slide shows is the stages of vehicles and how they've grown over time. In the 1950s, so anybody that has seen some of the videos from the bicentennial parade, we had three generations of our engines in that parade. And the Peter Pershas that we had, those were of that era, and they were about seven feet wide and about 20 feet long. A current engine today is eight feet wide, so about 100 inches with the mirrors, and as much as 40 feet long. Most of ours are in the mid 30s. And the last one, the largest one, is the aerial apparatus. A modern straight stick is about 44 feet long. The two vehicles that we have currently are our tower ladder from 2003, it's 53 feet long, and a straight truck. We also have our tiller, the tiller ladder truck, or Big Bertha, if you've seen her in parades or over the many generations, she's 60 feet long. So, even the modern trucks are even shorter at this point. So, we're trying to fit a 60-foot vehicle, a 53-foot vehicle, in spaces that were designed for vehicles that were roughly 20 feet long. So, the needs assessment and programming detail, this phase, we sat down initially with the architect, Bob Mitchell, who we met at the conference in Raleigh in 2015. He works alongside Castle Bose, and when we came through with the contract, we started working with Bob. So, this phase took many hours over many conference calls and sitting with Bob Mitchell doing surveys to how we operate within the facility currently. And then, the very difficult part was, Mr. Mitchell asked us to say, how are we supposed to do things? And that was a very difficult project to move forward with, because we're accustomed to operating in very small spaces, having to turn to our sides, to walk around vehicles, all those things. So, trying to envision how we're supposed to do something is fairly difficult to do. So, many hours were involved. I believe we ended up with, I think, a total of nine sessions that were several hours apiece by either video, phone, or in-person conferences to come up with this process. These are some of the pages that were involved with it, that determine space needs, how things operate, what type of apparatus we actually have now, and what type of things that we might need in the future. This is a partial 3D vision of a decontamination process and multiple areas of our operational versus a potential change in operation. So, essentially, what we're looking at here is occupational cancer is a huge topic in our industry at this point. Many young firefighters are ending up with different types of cancers, and decontaminating when they come back from a fire is one of the major concerns, which we have a very difficult time doing now. So, the flow path of this is showing from the contaminated side. If you can see the thing there, you would enter from there, coming back with your gear from the fire, going into that first decon space right here, and you'd start to strip your equipment away, your air pack, and some of your larger things, you can get the gross decontamination removed from you. Moving into the next stage, right here, is essentially the laundry. Right now, we have one gear extractor that can do two or maybe three sets of PPE at a time. Obviously, all of us come back for fires, so there's at least 20 sets of gear that needs to be washed every time we have a fire. We do have the benefit of having two sets, so we do have something to go into, but we need to wash that gear. So, what this lays out is for two gear extractors and two gear dryers, which is something that we don't have at the moment, so everything is air-dried at this point over a long period of time, or in the basement where we don't like to keep it. From that point, once you remove your PPE, you'd go into here, and there are four showering facilities, as I'll show you later in the presentation. There is one shower in our building right now. So, this, what this does is allow a firefighter to come back from a fire, decontaminate at multiple levels, and walk out clean the other side. The other part of this design here, and where the turnout gear locker room is, one of the things that's designed into that now is that there is a negative pressure within that room that draws whatever other things that don't get washed out of the gear, they off-gas for a period of time afterwards. So, instead of having it just stay stagnant, there is a negative pressure that draws those things out. This turnout locker room is set up for 50, and it does take into account that we do have two sets of gear. So, this would give us more than enough room to move in. Also, you can also see the EMS supply rooms and things that are there. Right now, our supply room for EMS is the old kitchen, was renovated by the guys to jam as much stuff as we could in one place. This takes into account having spare equipment, the supplies necessary, and having it be immediately available to the apparatus afterwards. So, now we'll get into some of the conditions with the existing facility. Many of you have toured the facility in the past. I welcome anyone that hasn't to come visit. Here are some of the original photos, and this one was, I believe, about 2010, when the roof was reshingled, the slate was reshingled on the tower. Some of the things that you can see right at the back of the tower ladder, right there, that's a steel I-beam that was inserted to carry the load, because there are settlement cracks in that location. And on either side of that steel beam, there's wooden reinforcements. Those were installed in roughly 2010, and they stay right now. So, there are many pictures here, we'll try and get to all the points of them. If you notice in the top left right there, as it comes out, this is not responding to a call, this is just somebody moving the vehicle out right now. That's how tight it is when the vehicle comes out. On either side of the mirrors, there's roughly one or two inches on either side of the mirrors as the trucks come out, and there is constantly a potential for damaging vehicles, damaging the building because of the size. Our apparatus that we order have to be ordered with a shorter frame, so most trucks would come with a 12-inch frame. We have to special-order our trucks with a 10-inch frame in order to fit in this building. So, we're paying more money for the apparatus that we purchase, because it has to be designed around fitting in our building. Again, the mirrors coming out on the corners. This is behind engine two in base six. Base six was originally supposed to house one piece of apparatus, there are currently three in that space. Engine two is backed up right to the wall, you cannot walk behind it, and you cannot walk on the driver's side of the vehicle, only to get in at the cab is the only spot. This picture here shows the proximity of our current bunker, our PPE, to the ambulances. They're so close that when everybody comes in for a fire off-duty, They're so close that when everybody comes in for a fire off-duty, they are pushing and shoving to try and have enough space to get dressed because of the tight constraints. This is also in Bay 6 where we have the three vehicles. That's the back of the tower ladder. You cannot walk between the wall and the tower ladder there. This is another angle of that same slot. So there are multiple vehicles in this facility that you cannot walk around. The tower ladder, when we purchased it in 2003, the reason, the main reason that we came up with that configuration of apparatus was because that was the only thing that would fit in the building. We could not order another tiller because the building could not accommodate the enclosed cab on the back of the tiller. So I already identified some of the settlement cracks that we talked about settling over the years. If you're not aware of it, the building was added on to twice, once sometime in the 50s and another time in the 60s, where Bay 5 and Bay 6 were added. And these are some of the points where they connect. So you can see the cracks there. I know it's difficult to see. Here again is Bay 4 with the steel I-beam above it and the wooden structure to either side of it to hold up the beam. There are cracks here, cracks here. At one point, you could actually look out from the inside of Bay 6 and see daylight to the outside of the building. These photos are all, photos of the somewhat public spaces or stairways and things of our station. This is the front foyer. One of the things that we look at is a possibility is renovating the current facility and continuing to utilize it. One of the things that needs to be addressed is that because we would have to do such a large portion of renovating the building, all of the facility would need to come up to code. So the stairwells in our building are not up to code. The handrails are not up to code. The rise overrun of the stairs are not up to current code. So on top of adding additional spaces to accommodate the apparatus and other portions of the building, we would have to bring a 120-year-old building up to code. Sprinkler systems, all those things would have to be incorporated at astronomical costs. Here's a photo of the bathroom. There is one shower stall and two sinks in there. That is the only showering facility in the station. At this, we just added a female call firefighter recently. We have no separate segregated female facilities in the building. So here's a comparison about what the space, recommended safe clearances are. Please excuse the European fire trucks that are in the presentation, but it's for space. So the recommended ceiling is 16 feet at this point in time is what would be constructed in a new facility or in addition to the facility that we currently utilize. And side to side, there's allowing for eight feet of space between apparatus so that the doors can open and a firefighter could still walk through that space and not be hung up, not be injured, tripping over something along those lines. So this is what the recommendations are. And these are the spaces that we deal with now. So at the very high point of our ceiling is 12 feet. And there is also a main carrier beam that is basically atop the middle of most of our apparatus. And the bottom of that beam is 10 feet. So the trucks are in that space. And then to get on the back of the truck to repack with hose, do things like that, the firefighters are bent over, possibly with the potential of hitting their head on the beam on the ceiling. So we want to obviously have those additional spaces so that they can operate safely and prepare the equipment for the next incident. So as far as square footage is concerned, if you account for every space within our building now, Chairman Joe Van brought up the 17,000-plus square feet. We, for our number, included the actual attic space because we use it for storage. So Elm Street is 22,000 square feet is what we estimated between the basement, the main apparatus floor, the second floor where the living quarters are and the attic spaces. So 22,000 square feet at Elm Street. And if you haven't noticed, we have stuff all over town. This trailer right here, if you've seen in the parades or in some of the events, we have a UTV, the Bobcat UTV. This is the trailer that in the best-case scenario, it would sit on in the apparatus bay. That is sitting down at the sewer plant right now because we do not have a coverage space to put it. So obviously, when I took this picture, there was a foot of snow there. So if we did need to move that piece of equipment, it would be fairly difficult to do so. The second photo here is the light tower. The light tower is used at events and can be used at emergencies over long periods of time. It was used extensively during the days after the tornado. That's at the Morris Street Field House. So on the backside of the Morris Street Field House, there's a garage door. That's where that piece of equipment sits. Again, I took the picture the other day when there was a foot of snow on the ground and it would be very difficult to get a vehicle to there to connect it and pull it out of there because of those circumstances. The last photo in the corner shows some of the regional equipment that we have. The red van item that's there, that's the communications truck. That was in another bay of the DPW, but since the purchase of the rescue truck and moving some apparatus and removing some vehicles, the communications truck is in there. We have our signboard, which you see anytime there's something going on or voting or something. That is our signboard. And behind that signboard is a trailer that we utilize for mass casualty incidents. That's also a regional asset. So if you add up all of these spaces, that comes to about 30,000 square feet. So obviously, our current building doesn't do well as far as allowing for ADA compliance, things along those lines, having pathways for people to walk through, move things. So with our needs assessment, the total came up to around 36,000 square feet. And essentially, those 6,000 square feet between what we have now and what we're looking to produce are essentially those pathways that allow people to move freely. So at the same time as the programming was going on with Bob Mitchell, Chief DeFranzo at the time and myself, Castle Bose was doing part of the site selection. The Fire Station Building Committee came up with a list of potential sites. And the goals there were to attempt not to displace any businesses, have as little impact as possible on neighborhoods, current sites, things like that. But we needed to find large, open spaces, which there are not a lot of in the community. So the list that we went with was obviously at the top, it was the existing fire station to see what we could do on the current site. Another thing that was brought forward was Dresser Park. Obviously, that would involve moving monuments, things like that, which we really don't want to do if we don't have to. Foster Street area, which has changed hands. Initially, when we looked at it back around 2002, 2003, there was a potential to capture many of those properties. At this point, the, most of them have been bought up. So we would not have as many pieces of property available to us there. You also had the Beechwood property at 495 Main Street, which is across the street from Wells Junior High. And obviously, right now, that's being looked at for a potential business purchase. And as I'll show, it didn't fit. Another is 79 North Street or the old Public Assistance Building. Number six was Marsh Ave and Elm Street, which is an open lot area. And 67 Central or the Sweetwater Property. Those were the lists that the architects were looked at for feasibility of putting a facility on a site. They worked with Will Canoyer to look over some other areas of possibility. And this was the list that we consistently went with. So the red shaded area is the footprint of the 36,000-square-foot design of a potential new facility that we came up with. And the yellow outlines are the property lines that we would have to either acquire or take over, with that first one here being the existing fire station. If it's difficult to see, I apologize. But with the length of the building, that would involve taking all of the park as well as multiple properties on the edge of Dresser Street just to fit the facility on that site. It also involves, even if we use that site, there are additional parking issues where we may end up having to take some of the public parking spaces. As Chairman Joe Van brought up, we do have the cell tower right behind the current facility and we would have to work around that or potentially move it. Dresser Park, if you can see right here, the design of the facility would actually go on the other side of the entranceway into the Dresser Park facility. Foster Street, these properties down here are no longer available. And one of the downsides to that property was the topography. If you stand at the top of Wardwell Court and look down, you're actually looking at probably the second story of the three-family homes that are down there. So there would be a huge land-moving process that would go with that. The Beechwood, that would involve two different properties. Right here, there is about a 15-foot retaining wall and then it drops off. So you would have to bring the ground up. And based on what Chief DeFranzo and I learned in the conferences, we do not want to be on a main street. We would want to be essentially a street off of a main road. North Street, it sits in the whole space and actually that blue area is the river. So obviously, it would not fit there. Marsh and Elm, it fits on the property, including two pieces of property with very little to do there. The 67 or Central Street or Street Water Property, there are multiple things there. There is Nuisance Brooks, which runs underneath that whole area. And as we're aware, the DPW is trying to move forward with reconfiguring the traffic pattern down there. And it takes up the entire spot. There's about an acre of land there. And ideally, to include parking, all the things that we need to take into account, we need about a three-and-a-half-acre footprint. So those were the test footprints. One thing that has come up and was initially discussed is why not put it next to the police station? Again, the footprint does not even come anywhere close to fitting on that site. It actually, if you put the building next to it, it actually would end up inside the police station. And we did not want both the police and fire stations to be within a floodplain, the same floodplain. What this next slide shows is all the things that were taken into account with each piece of property, which includes the property's use, the assessed value, the topography, all those things that the landscape engineers brought forward for information. And with that information, they came up with a site rating and recommendation. Basically, it gave each item that they scored a score of one to five and added up the tally for the most feasible or recommended site. So as you can see, the highlighted area shows Marsh Ave with the highest score. And that's how they recommended as the ideal site to move forward with. So part of this process is obviously, we needed a base to come up with a potential cost of how much something like this would cost. Like I said, we sat on many occasions with Bob Mitchell to come up with what our current operations are and our needs are going to be. And a conceptual design came out of that. Using the recommended site, this is what it would potentially look like. This is Elm Street here. This is Marsh Ave here. As you can see, if you've gone down Marsh Ave, hides, keeps some tractor-trailers stored over there. So essentially, this comes, there's three pieces of property that take up that whole area and this sits on two of them. As you can see, there is some setback concerns because of the brook that's there. We have approached the DEP and have gotten to determination that the design, the site design that sits before you would be feasible on the site. This space here, this encroachment is allowable because they allow for 10% or 5,000 square feet of encroachment in the 100-to-200-foot section from the brook. The other thing that we've investigated as well is that if we were able to show photos of the facilities that used to be built on that site, then we could potentially put more things in this area. At this point, we haven't been able to identify any photos of that, but we're still looking into it. So this is a potential floor design. Like we discussed earlier, it's about 36,000 square feet. These areas here are the administrative offices. The public would enter from here. If I, I'll back up. So this is public and staff parking here and the public would enter from here. So as you would come in here, there's an open foyer area. If you saw in the parade and used to see in town council chambers here, the Tiger 7. The idea is to put Tiger 7 in that facility, in that site. And this would be a training room or a training facility. Allows for additional spaces for fire prevention, all the things in the administrative offices. The green areas here are living spaces. This would be exercise facilities, kitchen and dining facilities. We need a secondary source if there was ever to be any issues with dispatching in the future. We need a secondary site. So we included a secondary site there as well. Living quarters. And these are the apparatus bays, obviously. There are a total of seven main bays. And then these bays on the end and these bays in the front are ancillary vehicles. These are the administrative vehicles. These vehicles on the end are things like the fire alarm bucket truck and some of those regional assets that we had discussed about having. So this puts everything that we have under one roof. At this point, we don't see the need to add any additional engines or pumps to our complement of equipment. It would be smaller vehicles, things like that. So this encompasses our needs for now, the future, keeps everything in one place and accommodates all those things. This would be the second floor. The only thing that is on the second floor of the building here are the living quarters. And then this is the mezzanine level in the firematic space that's used for training. This front area here, I'll show you some outside pictures after, but this would be utilized for training as a tower. There would be a standpipe system in there for us to hook up to. So you could advance hose lines, things like that. It's also multipurpose for potential high-angle rescue training as well as drying hose if need be. These spaces here can be utilized for storage, other things. And that's the basic floor plan. So here, this would be a potential exterior view from Marsh Ave. Here's the tower I was talking about. You can throw ladders to the outside of it. There would be different-sized windows, things. This is by no means a set design of what this facility would look like. This is a conceptual design based on the square footage. And what Bob Mitchell did with this is kind of mirror some of the other things going on in our community with the brick facades and kind of trying to incorporate somewhat of the tower that we have now in those spaces. So we've heard many people say that, you know, this isn't what it should look like. This is by no means the end design of what this facility could potentially look at. This was conceptual design so that you could see something based on the square footage needs so that we could come up with a cost estimate. Another view from across Marsh Ave. Again, this is the administrative spaces, essentially the living quarters, administrative vehicle bays, main apparatus bays and the ancillary vehicles on the end. Again, a view from another angle. So they've given us the site of Marsh Ave as being the most recommended site. Many people have said that they would like to see us stay in the same place that we are now and we needed to know what that would cost as well. So the option of an ad-reno was also looked at because the existing fire site also came in second as far as the recommended sites. So this is a potential plot plan. We did not go beyond the plot plan, but as you can see, these are the spaces of Bay 5 and 6 now. Those bays would be torn down. The main building would be brought up to code and additional new facilities would be built on the rest of the property. That property goes all the way to the edge of Dresser Street. That property goes all the way to the edge of Dresser Street, allows for a very small entranceway to the back. There is a huge retaining wall that would have to be here, and we would need to take over some parking spaces in the existing public parking because we only have nine spots right now. And obviously, we want the public to be able to come in and interact, do daily business, so we need more spaces to park. So some of the things that come in as problem issues if we stay on the same site is the full scope of the structural repairs to the current facility aren't really known. Until you open the walls, we really don't know what they're going to find. You can see the stress, the settling cracks from things as they are now, but you're not going to know the full extent of the work until you start opening the walls. This allows for 36,000 square feet, but not in the same floor plan as the proposed design for a new facility. So we might be able to fit the same square feet, but as far as the flow of how things are supposed to work and how we would like things to be done, we would not necessarily be able to do that on the current site. As I indicated, the retaining wall that's in there, insufficient onsite parking and use of the adjacent parking lot, apparatus maneuverability and the exterior training is very restricted. Obviously, you can see from time to time that we try and accomplish training, but right now, we only have, you know, 15 feet or so of sidewalk to work with, maybe a little bit of the park. So again, we're not able to train on this site as well as we would be on another site. And the opinion of probable project cost is considerably higher than building a new facility. So we wanted to show you what it would look like if we had to remain on the current site and bring 36,000 square feet to there. So in the report that you have before you, it's about 200 pages, and everyone's pretty much concerned about the very end of it, which are these numbers. So the one on the left side of the screen is the opinion of probable cost for building a new facility on the recommended site, which was Marsh Ave. The total cost is estimated at $22,400,000. The other opinion of probable cost is staying on the existing site and renovating, renovating and adding to the current building. That estimate, without opening the walls, without taking into account all the downsides to that potential, it is also roughly $2 million more, almost three. So at this point, this is based on the space needs that we have, a potential design. Like I said, what it looks like is still to be determined as we look to move the project forward. I've spoken with some concerned residents in the Marsh Ave. area already. There was a misconception of the fact, if it sounded like we were ready to pull up with the excavators and start working, that's not the case. This is presenting what a recommended site is, and we'll move forward from here. These are the costs. As Chairman Joe Van has said, we have open lines of communication with our state legislators. We also have attempted contact with our federal legislators, and we're going to look for every possible funding source that we can. But this is what the project potentially could cost. The report is in front of you. At the end here, if you have any questions, what I added on the bottom of there, the website has been live for some time. The entire 200-page report is available on the website for the residents. The website there is www.SouthbridgeNewFireStationProject.org, and there are many frequently asked questions. There's pictures of the current facility, some explanations as to how things might move forward, and there's email contacts that go to the chief and myself, and we welcome anybody to come and visit, ask questions. We are trying to be as open as possible. Anybody that we have that has questions, we're open to them. So at this point, if you have any questions...
Counselor Manin?
Did you say Counselor Manin?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Deputy Chief Hewlock, for the presentation. I like the Marsh Ave. proposal. My question, though, is if it was to go with the renovation of the new...
Yes.
What restrictions would there be? Because that's like, isn't that on the historic register?
It is on a historic register, and essentially, the four main bays that are the main part of the original station now, we would not be able to do much to them as far as the facades, things like that. So we would not be able to continue to keep apparatus there. It would be potentially smaller vehicles. And like I said, the path of how we would like to do things would not necessarily be capable of doing that in the current facility if we renovated it.
Right. So I think, I really like the proposal for the Marsh Street, and you're saving $3 million too.
Some of the other things as far as the cost and concern that aren't taken into account with staying on the existing site, potential construction time for a new facility is about 18 months, and the architects have explained to us that if we stayed on our current site, that we'd probably be adding another nine months of construction time to that, and we'd also have to go through what they call phasing, where we'd be operating in certain parts of the building until they constructed a new section, and then we'd have to move into that so they could renovate the old. So there's many additional costs that go along with that, which are included in the opinion of probable cause.
Right. And like you said, once you open up those old walls, you don't know what you're digging into.
Correct.
And we have a lot of those old buildings here in Southbridge. Another question for the upstairs of the proposal for the new fire station, I saw it was like 12 bedrooms?
12 bunk rooms, correct.
So would there be one dedicated one, or two dedicated ones for female, or is it just on a rotation?
It's based on a rotation. Essentially, there would potentially be up to four. We work four shifts, groups one through four, and they'd be sharing, they call it either a hot or a cold bunk, and there's multiple locker facilities for their things, so it would be based on the shift. But each room is individual, so the females would have their individual room.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, my compliments to Deputy Chief Hewlock for a fantastic presentation, as well as my compliments to Counselor Joe Van, who, acting in his capacity, is chairman of that committee, along with former counselors Langivan, Nicola, Mr. Sugda, yourself, Mr. Hewlock, Deputy Chief Hewlock now, and those others that have participated, as well as those that have attended those committee meetings and maybe spoken up. Thank you for the service. I think there's a lot to consider here. I'm very impressed with the site selection process. I'm not thrilled with Marsh Street. I have several objections, and I am a fan of finding a way to make the existing site work. But with that, I would just ask you to go back to your opinion of probable costs and point out, I don't suggest there's any sleight of hand, but there are contingencies built into both of those slides.
Correct.
You didn't mention that, but I'll point out that when you take out the contingencies and base them on relative percentages, those numbers come a lot closer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd also look at the map of the location that's proposed for Marsh and Elm, and I would ask you and the chief, in particular, how does that particular site selection, if it were chosen, impact your arrival times to the more frequently, not more frequently, the sites that you need to be from across town? I mean, that's got to be 30, 45, 60 seconds further away to a lot of parts of town from the existing site.
I did that myself in my own vehicle, just myself driving down the street. It adds about 30 seconds.
Okay. All right. And every second counts in an emergency. I heard that when I toured another fire station not too long ago, and I know that you and your department firmly believe in that. So I appreciate that. I think also that, and this is a little more informal, but I'm not really a fan of centralizing in our community. We've seen that at least once in the past, not in my lifetime, but in the lifetimes of perhaps some that are in this audience, there was a flood downtown. What if natural disaster occurred? We couldn't get some of our equipment out of this central fire station. I think that allotting some of our resources into other areas of town is not a bad idea. I'm not the professional. I'm just thinking about it from a council perspective, from a resident perspective, and as someone that absolutely shares the same sort of concerns and love for this community as you and the chief and those that have participated. So I appreciate the good work. I hope that when this comes forth for ballot vote, we have a really solid understanding of the direction we are going to head with the site selection. But as it is now, I appreciate the concern of those residents that have reached out to me because I share the same sentiment. Marsh Avenue is not the selection that I would make at this time. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Counselor Adams?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Counselor Adams, if you don't mind, just a response, if I may, to Counselor Nash. We did have conversations about the centralization of equipment and the assets and the like, and part of the conversation in our charge was, what are the current needs of the fire department? What do you have? What would it look like to be put all on the same footprint? So it's, because at one point, Chief DeFranzo had not put those assets accounted into a new facility. But our charge really was, these, this is everything that we have to do on a day-to-day basis, or they have to do as a fire department, if you were to put it under one roof, what does that look like? And then from there, we've had conversations about if certain items had to be taken out, how would we go about it as an ancillary building within the same property or the like? So that is a concern. It was just, when you do a feasibility study, you want to account for everything that you have and what will it look like, and then from there, we'll discuss and figure out how do we go forward, just to your point. But it was, that's the reason why it's all incorporated, again, with the rooms and all that. So thank you, though, for your point.
May I follow?
Thank you, Derek. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Counselor Joe Van and Deputy Chief. Absolutely have great appreciation for that. And just in case I wasn't clear, I absolutely support the initiative and recognize the need of this community to take this step. It is long overdue, but I'm glad that those things have been discussed in committee. And I have to give my compliments once again because some of those meetings were extremely long in time because they were extremely well detailed in nature. So I appreciate that, and thank you for the extra time.
If I could just respond as well, Counselor Nash, multiple facilities was considered, but also, the other thing that comes into that is duplication of spaces, additional costs because of that, and staffing.
Understood.
I get it now?
You get it now.
So I want to thank everybody for all the hard effort that you put into it, and all the time and energy, and I understand that this is not always a pretty subject to talk about, especially about the cost here and there, but the fact is, I fully support you guys in getting a new firehouse or remodeling the firehouse. I do want to say that right now. You do have my support. And one thing that I, when I looked over the study itself, I had a bunch of questions, so forgive me if I keep asking some of the same questions over and over. If you say bump, I understand what you're saying. I also understand that the current firehouse alteration, Level 3, which means 50% or more of that, your current firehouse, our current firehouse, needs to be gutted.
Correct.
Replaced. HVAC system, electrical system, fire suppression system, multiple egress that you don't have right now, and luckily enough, nobody's, or maybe we don't have that on record anywhere that nobody's been hurt, be it civilian or firefighter. Air quality monitoring system, which I don't think you have at all, which you're, I think, required to have at this point in time, and I could be wrong here, I'm no expert, and I printed off these 204 pages.
You are correct.
It took a while. But, so I do fully support the effort, and I support the fact that you guys need a, or we, as a town, need a fire, a new fire station. First quick question I have for you, though, and there's a few of them here. I noticed on the feasibility study, you talked about police and fire department, or fire station. Was there any intent during this period of time to, or is that just a typo?
That's a typo.
Sorry, I'm not going to look at him over here behind you.
That is a typo.
That's a typo. Okay. Just asking that quick question. I do know that you guys are looking, and I know we've talked about this already with Senator Fatman, looking for state and federal grants, monies here and there, talks at some of this cost going forward. So that was a lot of questions, that was a simple question from a lot of people that were asking, why the size? How much is the cost? I even got one stating that the average cost of fire departments here in the state of Massachusetts, the new ones that are going up are $16 million, but we're asking for 22 to 25. And to be honest with you, when I actually looked at your consulting numbers, that's going to actually probably go up. Now, I know you put in a 10% increase, just in case, a fudge factor. I believe they put a 10% in there, but I also know, can you answer this, though? On the new facility, you put a 10% contingency plan in there, but on the remodeling phase, you put a 20%.
The additional contingency there is for those factors of the unknown, the things that we don't know that are in those walls. That's what generally, with an ad-reno, they do have an additional contingency.
Okay. Are there any wants that are put in there instead of needs?
Everything that's based in there is based on how we should be operating. We have been operating with undersized spaces, without the facilities that we need, without the facilities to train properly onsite. All of the things that were taken into account to this are to operate as we should be.
Okay. Thank you. One thing I noticed in here was there was a serious, there was a great breakdown. There was a great breakdown on the facility for Marsh Ave. And is that Central Street as well? Is that, you know, on North Street? Is this the same amount it's going, it would cost us, or it would cost the taxpayers, or for North Street, for Central Street, for Marsh Street?
Based on the conceptual design that we have is based on everything being on one level. Essentially, the only thing that's on a second level are the living quarters. For a facility to fit on some of those other sites, the facility would have to be made a large, two-story or more structure to accommodate, to fit in those spaces, which would increase the cost. So any, anything on a site other than the Marsh Ave. site, there would be additional cost contingencies because of having to build a two-story, a full two-story facility, or changing the configuration to fit on a site.
Okay. All right. All assets, Counselor Nash brought up about your assets, and it's been my concern from day one, is my past career. Placing all assets in one area in a 40% floodplain, possible 40% floodplain, concerns me on Marsh Ave. Now, my concern here is we don't know when a tornado goes in. We don't know when anything is going to happen, you know, when it comes to natural causes here and there. But my concern is, and I'd hope everybody would look at that when it's time, because this is a conceptual design and the placement of it, I'd hope you guys would take that in consideration of placing all assets in one location.
Another thing that's been with past history, obviously, we have had hurricanes, we have had floods in the community, and there has been contingencies of placing pieces of our apparatus staged through different parts of town during those circumstances. So we know we have some bridges that may be impassable, things like that, and in certain large-scale events, going back to, I believe, the last time it really came up was Hurricane Gloria, maybe, where they actually staged equipment in different parts of the town in case for that fact.
But when we're talking about hurricanes, we can hopefully foresee those things coming. But again, natural disasters happen, floods, tornadoes, earthquakes, you name it. My concern is all assets in one spot. When taking a look at what your conceptual design is now, is that based off, I know you kind of briefly talked about it, but is that based on what you have now?
That's where we're...
Or is it, now, taking a look at your table of equipment, maybe down in the future, do I need these vehicles that I may be used only once, or I never used at all, or whatever it may be? I mean, did you guys take that in consideration as well?
Yes, we did. Obviously, apparatus changes over time, and we still felt that the need, the space needs were going to be there. There may be different configurations of equipment, but when it comes down to the stuff that actually does the work, the engines, the ladders, things like that, if we did not maintain the current complement that we have now, we would have changes in our ISO rating costing the residents more, and homeowners' insurance, things like that. So we need to at least maintain the current complement of heavy equipment that we do now.
Okay. Thank you. On your, I think it's ratings and recommendations, 5.3, who put the numbers in? Was it the consulting firm, or? It's not something that I don't think, you know, you need to answer right away. My only concern is who put those numbers in, because they may be questions down the road.
Can I have the page number, please?
Okay. I got it right here. That one. I don't think there's a number on there. But it's 5.3?
It's the last page of Section 8.
Oh, okay. So the one that was in there, right. So the one that was in there. Opinion of the architects did that. There was Mr. McKeon, I believe it was a landscape design architect, the project engineer. Was there anyone else involved in that process?
Well, the committee, I mean, we discussed.
So it was the committee that put it in there?
No.
Yeah.
The scale of one to five was not the committee sitting there saying, we rate it. That was completely done by the consultant.
Oh, okay. That was done by the consultant.
They assigned certain numbers to factors of advantageous, not advantageous. So how?
So they assigned it, but who decided this was a five and this was a four and this was a zero and this is a one?
That was the architect firm.
That was architect.
That was not done by us, no.
I'm almost done here, so bear with me. Because I think a lot of, you know, the amount of money, but also the safety of our firefighters, our men and women that put their lives on the line every day, they deserve to be, it needs to be questioned, but at the same time also, I think wholeheartedly, I need to make sure that I support this and with all the answers I can get.
Certainly, Counselor Adams, if I just may respond to that point, your point is well taken. All throughout this process, it's been deliberative because going back to how we did a middle school, high school, you cannot rush into these things. You have to plan it. You have to study it. We're not going to make the same mistakes that the town has made, i.e. DPW building where we think that we can buy a building for X amount of dollars and then 10 years down the road, we spent a tremendous amount of money. Let's study it. Let's do it right. Let's and then whatever the plan is for the best plan, that's what we're going to put forward.
And nor do I want studies and feasibility studies to sit and collect dust and open up, prop doors open. So.
Absolutely, because wherever that other study went, they just sat on the shelf, we don't know.
So last couple of questions I have. Obviously, I kind of caveat off Counselor Nash, I do have concern about Marsh Ave. You talked about the time from point A to point B first, you talked about 30 seconds. What about the winter time? Roads are bad? I'm sure that was taken into consideration. Also, the response to the hospital, local hospital, has that changed any from going from here to?
Not necessarily because the distance to the hospital is going to be based on the resident or person traveling through that needs the ambulance. So wherever the call, the incident is located, that's going to dictate the distance. Like I said, it adds to get to the center of town, it obviously adds 30 seconds to get to the intersection of Main and Elm. But what we also took into account is trying not to disrupt current businesses, displace those things as little as possible.
Last couple of questions. Cell tower, talked about that. If you go to Marsh, you go to Central, wherever it may end up going, that's got to move, right?
No.
Or is it going to stay right there?
No, the cell tower would stay where it is. We may have to construct a tower on the site for our radio equipment, but the cell tower would stay where it is.
Okay. Again, I want to thank you guys for spending so much time, off time, putting this study together. There is a lot of questions out there and I'm hoping the citizens actually get out there and get online or make phone calls or take a trip because I've taken, I've walked through that fire station a few times already and it's pretty, it's pretty packed. And the fact is, the place has fallen down. It's 120 years old. With this, that being said, with this new facility, how long is this new facility estimated to last?
The design.
I'm not asking 120 years though.
No.
But I'm not going to be worrying about it by then.
The basis to it is a 50-year design. Obviously, with maintenance, things like that, it can be much longer than that, but the very basics is 50-year design.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Are there any other counselors that have questions? Mark?
Again, thank you for the hard work. I'm going to be the wet blanket here and I got to ask, the industry standard on a 50,000 square foot building is, is being proposed here is between $200 and $250 a square foot. That would put you in the 10 to 12 million dollar range. I get that this is going to be prevailing wage. I get that it's, you know, soon as it's a town or a state thing, you might as well add a third amount of money. That being said, and I'm sure we're going to take a million dollars for studies anyways. But my question is, with $22 million, where's your helicopter pad in the case of a natural disaster? Where are the emergency shelters for housing in the case for natural disaster? Where's your tree edge in case Harrington Hospital is completely overwhelmed? Has any of that thought been put into this for 22 mil besides everything you've shown us?
It is designed to house the EOC for the community as well as the fact of all of our shelter designs are based on the community center at this point, all of our sheltering equipment, things that are there. So that was taken into account. The fire station will not be a shelter.
Counselor DePietro, if I may, through Counselor Steve's. I think I get your point. Been around long enough. Cost, exactly, cost per square footage is what you're asking. The architect firm that we employed is very skilled in the study and building and construction of public safety buildings. If you go to their website, I welcome you to go to their website. They have many, they have many fire stations, public safety buildings that they're currently under construction, that they have constructed. In fact, the reason we picked Castle Bose was that they were the architect that designed and built current police station. So they're very familiar with the town of Southbridge. When we employ them, I feel confident, I agree, the cost is unbelievable, but they build enough of these buildings that they know how much it is cost per square foot. And we also have to be cognizant of the fact that we work in a prevailing wage state. So a building that you may be able to build in your private sector that you're familiar with, that will say, I can build that for $100 per square foot, now suddenly because of prevailing wage, is much more costly. And that is a problem throughout the Commonwealth and it has been a problem as long as I've been around. Because you look at those buildings, you sit there going, yes, you're an expert in your field, Counselor. You know how much it costs to build stuff, but you're the private guy. When we look at prevailing wage and throw that cost factor in, that's what drives up these costs, unfortunately. And we're in a prevailing wage state, so we do know in researching the architect that they are usually within 1% of their cost estimating. They do a very good job of costing it out, looking at it, triple checking it and being very close. So we might not like the cost, but that's the cost. And to Counselor Adams' point about wants versus needs, we went in at the very beginning on this, that this would be a needs-based assessment, not a want. You always hear, no matter what community I've been in or no matter what project I've been in, because I've been on public safety projects as a police chief, you always hear the word Taj Mahal. You guys want the Taj Mahal. That's not the case at all. We want a functioning, safe, 21st century fire department that's safe for our firefighters that will last for the next 50 years, probably 100.
Thank you, Jack. Counselor, may I?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one more thing. With the opinions of the probable costs, options one and two, it says January 31, 2018. That should be 19? No?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor DePietro, if I could, the average square foot cost of a fire station is between $4 and $450 per square foot for rough construction costs. And then the soft costs are additional to that. So the $22 million number based on 36,000 square feet, the final cost is about $600 a square foot.
Could I respond to that, please?
If you wish to.
Ouch.
Agreed. Okay, Counselor Daniel. I'm sorry, were you done, Counselor Lavana? Were you done?
I'm done.
Okay, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to congratulate the committee on the fine work that they've done, the presentation tonight. I've been attending the building committee meetings since probably last May and they've been very diligent in their work and I've never heard anyone ask for a Taj Mahal or anything like that. I think the committee in its internal discussions has been very reasonable, very responsible, and very aware of what the taxpayer needs are in town. I don't know that they're asking for the world. I do support the initiative as well, but I do have a couple of questions. Compared to other communities in Central Massachusetts, Southern Western County, how big a department are you?
We're other, our other departments are starting to encroach on our size. They seem to be growing as we have been in the same size for many years. Industry average for a city fire department is about 16,000 to 18,000 square foot for a facility, but those facilities are spread out throughout their communities. The reason ours is large is because we do have more pieces of apparatus that are staffed by less people more infrequently. So keeping everything in one place, that is why the facility is larger.
Okay. Is it safe to assume that because of the nature of the architecture in town and the various structures that we have in this town, a wide variety, that you're equipped to handle the various situations that you have?
I'm sorry, in equipped?
Equipped.
Equipped, yes. We have the, we have the equipment that we need. We just need the people to do it.
Would you say you're over-equipped?
Over-equipped? No.
So then reading into the future, and I know that you don't drink tea, so you can't read the tea leaves, however, do you feel that equipment-wise, that you're set for the foreseeable future in terms of the types of equipment you have and the level of equipment that you have at this point? I'm not saying you're going to need a new truck at some point, but.
Yes, we, obviously, there is a replacement process to many of the vehicles, including some of the aerial apparatus. You know, obviously, our ladder truck, the trailer of the ladder truck is from 1971 and the horse of that truck is from 1989. So obviously, based on the purchase of the tower ladder, if you're, if you're looking at some of the larger vehicles, the tower ladder was purchased in 2003 and that truck was purchased because that was what could fit in the building.
Okay.
So we, we will need different configurations of equipment, but the amount of equipment is going to remain pretty consistent.
Great. Okay, so what you've got is what we're going to see going on into the future. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you a second, Counselor Daniel? Okay.
Excuse me, through the chair to Mr. Daniel. The six-year capital plan has been identified. I don't know if you've received that plan as of yet. There is a need in a couple of years to replace one of our older engines. And then, as the deputy has said, the aerials need to be addressed. But the most important part is that if we were to build a fire truck or a ladder truck right now, it's not going to fit in our station.
Right, you're not adding additional equipment to the inventory that you have. You're just replacing what is, needs to be replaced at the time.
That is correct.
All right, so you're not going to, you're not going to build a building and then fill it. You're building a building that will satisfy the needs that you have right now.
That's correct.
Perfect.
Okay. Counselor Lavana?
Thank you. Just one more thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. How long are these numbers good for?
I would say they'd get reassessed about every six months.
Every six months? So in six months, if a decision isn't made about how much could this go up? Can somebody answer that?
What is the inflation rate for construction at this point?
It's expected to be 4.3% this year. There is some escalation in there because we know you weren't going to go out to bid right now. I believe it's to the end of the year.
So this is good to the end of the year, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. 2019. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the council? Okay, I do have a couple. If there's any citizens that wish to ask questions, please line up over there and I have a couple of quick questions. First of all, did you guys consider any sites that were not downtown?
I'm sorry.
Did you guys, did you, I know, I saw the list of the sites, obviously, that you specifically looked at. During the course of the discussions you had, did you consider any other sites that were not specifically downtown?
No, that since we're in, essentially, in all eggs in one basket, the core of the community is where we need to be.
Yep, just for a point of clarification, we discussed it.
Okay.
But the determination by the experts on the fire department was, this is where we need to have in the central core, somewhere in the central core area.
Okay.
But that was brought up as point of discussion at the onset of our talks.
Okay. Also, you repeatedly mentioned a couple of times that the project is 36,000 square feet and that you're currently using about 30. What do you see? First of all, what do you, what are the primary differences in that extra 4,000 square feet that you're looking at? And how much of it, and did you kind of look at the cost differentials between, between that for that area?
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
You mentioned that, you mentioned a couple of times that the project proposal is 36,000 square feet and that you've, but you also mentioned that you've been using about 30,000 square feet. So do you, what, what, what are the primary differences in the spaces, the additional space? And how would you, I'm kind of playing a little devil's advocate here. What, how would you, how would you operate without that extra square footage?
As we do now with where the factory, you can't walk around apparatus. You, you don't have normal flow paths for people walking through the building. You don't have accessibility. All of, like I explained in the presentation, those additional square feet are basically flow paths, correct flow paths for construction spaces at this point.
Okay. Okay. Also, I know I've had people raise a question about, about the brick facade versus other construction alternatives that might be less expensive. And I realize that you haven't, that this is kind of, this is kind of preliminary at the moment, but do you have any ideas at this point about what the alternatives might actually be that would possibly bring the cost down?
There are other options. This brick facade, obviously, was going with what's going to last the longest with the least amount of maintenance. Other options are concrete block, certain areas of steel structure, those things, but all of those require more maintenance than a brick facade. So when you calculate it out with the additional maintenance costs and things over time, you're really not saving that much. But obviously, all of those things will be factored in when it comes time to make an actual building.
Okay.
Counselor Steve, if I may, just to respond to the space question that you asked, I want you to picture the existing building. You have six doors.
Right.
We're asking for seven doors. But you need to really take a look at the fire station and go in there to, when you look at one of those, the sixth bay at the end, the way you have to configure trucks in, you're really using one bay for two trucks.
Three.
Or three trucks. So you're not, you know, it's not like, hey, we're going to say this big space. It really is one door for actual equipment that they have to get in and out. So you have to conceptualize that.
Okay, yeah. I definitely can, I can see that where the way, the way the proposal is that you guys can go in and out from both sides, which obviously makes a huge difference, whereas you can't do it in the current site, so.
And that's always a concern. I think any, anytime, I know I was involved many years ago in my prior role, and that was a concern with the fire chief when we were looking at that, was that you have those dual sides because you don't want a piece of apparatus to be stuck behind one. If one breaks down, malfunctions, can't get out the door, that you can't get another piece out. So that's the reason for that.
Right.
Plus, it's safety, too. A lot of accidents, a lot of injuries occur when you're backing apparatus in.
Right.
So you want to try to alleviate that concern.
Okay. Also, a couple, actually, to kind of tie into that question, when you, when you're looking at the renovation of the current site, what would you end up having to do with the vehicles while you're renovating the base? Where would they go?
That's part of the phasing is they would have to essentially build other portions of the building first, then move vehicles into that. Some vehicles would have to be moved off-site. Living quarters would have to be addressed during those phasing periods. So you're essentially moving, constructing new spaces, moving into them, and then renovating the old spaces.
Because I was thinking in terms of, I mean, obviously, if you're taking out, build, if you're moving them around, where would, I mean, would you end up leaving them primarily at the DPW?
That would be one of the options, yes.
Yeah, that seems like the biggest space available. Okay. Also, just to clarify, you mentioned that the, that the variety of recommendations that you're talking about, I'm assuming those came, came from the MFPA, the NFPA?
I'm sorry, your question again?
In terms of like the space requirements and the way things should flow and those kinds of things, I'm assuming those recommendations came from the NFPA?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily, based on construction configurations.
Okay. And, let's see, was there one more question I had? Okay. And, he did have one more question here. Oh, and also, um, what kind of impact will, would moving the building, um, have on the organization, the reorganization of dispatch?
Uh, having the building, uh, in the Marsh Ave site, obviously, like we said, we've included a, uh, uh, dual-station dispatch center in case something was to happen for the police station, um, but essentially, it's just a different configuration of equipment in another spot.
Hmm. Any, any, so obviously, I would assume that that means that you'd have to extend the wires and stuff like that, but anything?
Not necessarily wires, uh, just different communications equipment, uh, they're looking at a microwave, uh, system for doing the merger now, so it would just be another, another site.
Oh, 'cause I remember when, during some of the discussions with the dispatch issue, um, there were concerns about, about the angle of, you know, being able to transmit from the fire station to the, to the, to the current police station, current fire station, and having to bounce it off of, um, sixty Charlton Street. Um, how would that, how would that, um, angle of access and so forth change if you were at Marsh, Marsh Ave?
Uh, that's being investigated at this point in time, uh, with, uh, I believe it was, uh, LW Bills was doing some site, uh, sections of what the line of sites would be and how that would affect it.
Okay. Do you have an idea of when that's likely to be done?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay, and that was the last of my questions. No, any other, Council Nash?
Thank you, Vice Chair Steves. Um, I'll ask this question directly, if you'll indulge me, and I would ask it of Mr. Jovan as the Fire Station Building Committee sub, um, Chair, and then also of the Fire Chief, is this the best site for a new fire station in Southbridge? Referring to Marsh Ave, or Marsh and Elm?
Oh, what's that? The preferred site?
The recommended site by the council.
It's the recommended site. Uh, from a construction point of view, it's always easier to build on, on a new, fresh piece of land. Uh, I think, um, our presentation tonight is, this is the recommendation, we need more discussion as to pinning down whether this is the preferred site or not, uh, maybe come back with, uh, some of the questions that have been generated tonight, uh, work with the architect to address those, those questions. I know traffic and the neighbors are that, it may be that we may have to employ a traffic study of some sort to determine whether that is the best site. So, this, you know, we haven't, that wasn't part of the pro, uh, the, the process. Right now, when you look at cost and size of the department and the area that you can put it in, uh, from that perspective, it's a, it's a great site. The drawback of the current fire station, again, you're staging construction, so you're increasing the cost. You're not alleviating the problems that you have with traffic coming in and out of the fire station the way it is configured now, um, as far as getting trucks in and out and trying to get, uh, uh, that addressed. So, it, it's, it's a topic I think we have to have further discussion on to really, uh, pin down. As of right now, that's the recommended site by the architect on the feasibility study. Uh, now, it's incumbent on us to sit and talk and digest it, uh, with the council, town manager, because we have to look at funding, number one, uh, is this the right spot? If it is the right spot, employ a dialogue with the owner of that property to see if it's, they'll even make it available to us, or is it eminent domain? So, we're not even close to those kind of conversations now. This is typically, this is the study, this is what it looked like, um, and council, give us some more direction of where you want to see us go. So, I'm throwing back on the council side.
Thank you. May I?
I'll, I'll let the chief address it, too.
I absolutely get it, but we've been looking at this for two years. We spent, what was fifty thousand dollars on a study. The people that are members of that committee are reputable committee members and valuable assets to our community. I have to imagine people have opinions after two years of looking at this, Mr. Jovan, and that's, that's what I'm looking for, and I, and I get this is a feasibility study. If people don't want to answer directly, that's okay, but I, I don't think this is the right site.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying, with all due respect, I'm not trying to dodge your question, to be honest with you, our committee did not take a vote as to recommend it as of yet. It was, the next step was, let, get, let's get the presentation to the council, get some feedback, and, uh, come back and make a final decision, because, look, the, the buck stops with the council as to whether they'll put it for a ballot question or not, and how we're gonna fund it. Uh, we can say all day long, let's put it, uh, there, or put it on Dresser Park and say, hey, that's it, that's the spot, but really, it's a council-driven decision. Our job, our mandate was to study the problem, come up with some solutions, and present it to the council and the town, and that's, we're at that point right now. So, now, we need some direction from town manager and council to say, okay, thank you for the study, hear some feedback, um, come back and, uh, those are two tops, or, hey, we don't like the study at all, throw it out and, and do something else. Uh, so, I mean, that's, we did what we were supposed to do, a feasibility study, and come back, these are the needs of the department, these are some possible solutions, present it to the town, now it's up to the council to, to say, hey, this is what we're gonna do, or give us some direction.
Well, I appreciate that, I think we have the biggest audience we've had in nine months.
Thank you.
Probably more people watching tonight, so it would just be nice to get that, that perspective from members of the committee before the council makes any further recommendations.
I think the perspective of this committee is, we are twenty years down the road. Former town council, for whatever reasons, couldn't make a decision twenty years ago, and now we're coming up with, uh, a recommended, uh, some recommended solutions and cost. Twenty years ago, the recommended solution for the fire station was a cost of four million dollars, and the town at that time said no, or the council said no, they didn't even want to entertain it, didn't even want to put it before the voters of the town for four million dollars. And twenty years later, five times the cost, and we're sitting here going, here's the solution, here's the recommendation, um, and at that time, it didn't go anywhere with the council. So, I don't want that to happen on this end, that here's, here's a solution, it's twenty-two, at that time, they worked for bonding of this pro, program, they went out and got bonded for the program, recommended bonding for it, the, the assessors, the ta, uh, the finance department, Dean Yakabuchi, who's on the finance board, John LaFlesh was the finance director, those guys were well-versed in the finances of the town of Southbridge, and gave their recommendation. And at that time, and we're gonna hear the same thing right now, uh, you know, I don't want my taxes to go up, which I get, um, one council said five cents is too much. Well, five cents twenty years ago, on a twenty-five-year bond, it would be coming off the bond in probably two years, and it would've been gone, it would've been done, and the solution would've been there. So, uh, we have a lot of work to do, this committee has a lot of work to do, um, so I look forward to working with the council, um, to give some direction to us.
Thank you, Jack.
I, I hope the chief's answers, just, yes or no?
Oh, Jesus. It's much shorter.
Remember, he wasn't on the committee.
I was not on the committee, and as, as you all know, I've just been permanently moved into the position as a fire chief. I wanna, uh, bring back the comment about the thirty seconds, uh, response time. You gotta understand that we're gonna be thirty seconds further down Elm Street, we're gonna be thirty seconds closer to the people in that residential area. So, you gotta think of that on both sides. We're losing thirty seconds from the Main Street side, but you're also going, if you talk about the Maria Ave side and that whole neighborhood that we frequent often, we'll be thirty seconds closer to them at that site, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I prefer not to respond now, I'll talk to the chief online about the actual statistics relative to that comment. Thank you.
So, are you done then?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Adams?
So, just real quick, um, I just wanna make a quick statement. I support a new fire station. I want you to understand that from my mouth to your ears, that hundred-and-twenty years in the same facility, shrinking based on the size of the equipment that's going in there now, we're lucky that nobody's gotten hurt, they, they, I can't even, I, it's amazing that even, in certain areas where they built an extra foundation, it's actually caving in, because they put it on top of a couple trees, and then take, then take the stumps out. So, my thing is this, I, I asked the residents to, to ask a lot of questions, I asked the residents to take a look at the feasibility study, I asked the residents to do your homework as well. Um, we're not all experts here, we rely on the experts for, for their decisions. Ultimately, I got it, it comes back to the town council, um, but I look forward to working with you even further for the next phase, um, seeing what you guys think, what some of your answers may be, uh, guidance to us is, again, I wanna thank you for your time and effort. I just don't want this study, like many of our other studies that we've seen in the past, die. So, it's time to move along. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, through you. It's not gonna die, because we've been pushing this, the fire department, the firefighters that are here tonight, uh, the group of individuals that I have on the committee with myself now, uh, we are pushing this agenda, uh, because it is the last building, um, and just as a follow-up to Counselor Nash's concern, I think at this point, too, we really have to, now that we've presented it to the town in this forum, we really have to get some more feedback from the town, because ultimately, the vote is gonna go through the town.
Right.
And they also are the guiding force as to what is the best solution that they will support financially.
Absolutely.
Is it renovated, added on to the existing station, or the Marsh Street location, regardless of what we say, 'cause that, that's always, that's always important, but I look forward to, we'll hold, uh, some additional meetings and welcome the, uh, community to come in, we'll hold it up here, uh, that, that's the next step, is to, to really get some feedback, uh, from, from the citizens and you, the council, so that we can move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, are there any other council comments? Counselor Vanna?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to echo Counselor Adams, um, I'm definitely for, um, either a renovated or a new building, I think something needs to be done regardless. Um, I mean, we can, we can look at the price, and we can tweak the costs, you know, you can change the facade, or, uh, maybe downsize a bit in square footage for a new facility, um, you might get lucky if you renovate and not have, uh, major structural problems that are hiding behind the walls, and that, that twenty percent, is it contingency? May not be twenty percent, it may only be five percent, ten percent, or maybe zero percent, if you get real lucky. Uh, regardless, we're not talking going back down to four million dollars like it was twenty years ago. This is gonna, uh, cost the town some money, and the residents need to understand that, but they also need to understand that inaction is costing the town money, has cost the town money in the past, and inaction at this point will cost the town more money in the future, and also will potentially cost, uh, injury or worse to the firefighting men and women that are serving this community. So, I think that, um, we can quibble a little bit over where and how, but I really believe that this definitely needs to be done come hell or high water, and I mean that literally as well, because, uh, some of the sites really are in floodplains and need to be looked at. Um, so, thank you.
Okay, um, I had to say a few minutes ago that I would open it to some questions from the audience, so anybody who would like to ask, um, please come up to the podium, say your name and address, as usual, you'll have three minutes. Anyone?
Good evening, my name is Bill Cody from two forty-three Everett Street, lifelong resident of Southbridge. Um, I like to address the roads in town. Um, my early years was a contractor.
Excuse me, are you here to ask specifically about the fire station project?
No, I was not.
Okay.
That's why I was sitting there.
In that case, then, um, citizens forum will be coming up shortly, um, please, you can address that then. This is specifically for the fire station project. Thank you, by the way.
Good evening. Mike Marquetti, one twenty Maria Avenue. Um, I had a chance to download the feasibility study, and I looked it over pretty good. And I'm, I, before I even start here, I'm not disputing that there are problems with that central fire station. According to this study, it's, it's unsafe, out of code, and it really is falling apart. So, I'm not disputing that, I just want you to know upfront. But I do have a problem with the Marsh Avenue location. Basically, with the traffic impact and the access, you have, on one side, Elm Street, where you have Marsh, Everett, and Elm Street, all converging on one narrow intersection, uh, there's poor visibility exiting Marsh Avenue onto Elm Street. I've driven, I, I live up there in the area, and I've driven that a few times, and when you come out of Marsh Avenue, you can't see cars coming off of Elm Street. So, no doubt, they're gonna have to do something with that intersection there, which probably will add to the cost. Um, on the opposite side of Marsh Avenue, you're exiting onto Eastford Road, right in front of the Eastford Road Elementary School. Now, if there's gonna be a significant impact on the residential neighborhood, you're gonna destroy a wooded area, uh, there is some wetlands there, which the architects did mention in their report that there was, they found some problems there, but, and they were talking at a DEP about it, but I didn't see any, I didn't see any further info on it or, or solutions, but I did hear him say something about it tonight. And then you have Cohasse Brook, which does run through the property. Now, I've seen Cohasse Brook flood in my lifetime, I, I'm, and I've seen it destroy a retaining wall. I know it's a, a hundred-year flood zone, but I've seen it flood, and I'm not a hundred years. I'm, I'm getting close, but not there yet. And with global warming, that's gonna have to be a concern, too, 'cause it's gonna be more flooding is going to occur around here in the future, unless you're a global warming denier. So, there's unknown costs with the Marsh Avenue property, which is why I'm not in favor of it. I, the consensus that I've gotten from people around town is they'd rather see it at the central fire station. I, I like Central Street, too, I thought that was a pretty good location. I wasn't aware that there was a brook going under it, uh, but according to the study, it's in the center of town, and I think the downtown Southbridge needs some revitalization. I think of a new fire station down there would eliminate some blight and really help make the downtown look a lot better. Uh, I don't see any environmental issues, there's no wetlands, no, no water protection areas, or river buffer zones, they have access to water and sewer, but basically, there's no neighborhood impact or destruction of wooded areas with the Central Street location. However, like I said, most people that I've talked to would rather keep it right where it's at. Some people have said that they don't think that people would be in favor of moving the monument, but I think you should, why don't you just ask, put it, put it on the ballot, would you favor moving the monument to, to keep the fire station at the Central Street location? So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Hold on a second. Counselor Adams?
Hi, uh, my name's Jackalman Wright, I live at two seventy-five Mercy Street. Um, I first want to say thank you to everybody here tonight, this was very informative, I did look over at the feasibility study, but I got a lot more information here tonight, hearing the perspective of the chair and, um, members of the fire department and members of the committee. Um, I do have a specific question, I was looking at that slide and pertaining about the costs, um, and it was hard to read. So, one question was, um, did it include the cost of purchasing the land that would be required, 'cause for the, um, the expanding the current fire station, you'd have to buy those two houses at the end of, um, by, um, Dresser Street, those would have to be bought, and then, obviously, buying the lot at the, um, Marsh Street location.
Yes, I did.
It did?
It did.
Okay, sorry, I just, I couldn't read it, so I just wanted to ask specifically. And then, also, um, my next question goes into that, um, the timeline, how would that be affected if they don't want to sell those properties and instead want to fight to keep their homes and going through the eminent domain process? How, would that extend the timeline further for either property?
Uh, if there was any con, contest to acquiring the property, yes, that would take an additional time to the process.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any further questions or comments from the audience?
Before I, before I forget, I'm sorry to interrupt, real quick, Mr. Marquetti brought up a, a point about Marsh Ave, isn't there a foundation on there, an old foundation on Marsh Ave right now? Uh, we've been told there is, there is one that we can see, uh, we do, uh, have been told there is another one on the property, I think once the snow melts, we'll go back and look, uh, explore it. Um, our conversations, I, I know Mr. Marquetti's comment was about DEP and not seeing it in the, uh, presentation, and I agree it's not there, but we have had conversations with DEP as far as the setback, and further conversation as to, um, uh, conversations with Senator Fatman, Representative Durant, they've been very helpful in trying to get us some assistance with DEP as well. Um, it's possible that, uh, if, if there's a foundation, there may be additional concessions that we'd have to work through with the Conservation Commission, that we could orientate the building a different way, possibly, um, on that footprint based on any setbacks, but we're not even close to that right now. Uh, thank you, though.
Thank you.
As far as the monument goes, we've had extensive conversations about the monument, that is a concern, um, you know, but I, I think when you look at, uh, the need of the town, if that's the, the preferred site, we have a beautiful park in Dresser Park that we, uh, could possibly talk to the trustees of that, uh, that work on monuments and, and the like, and discuss, uh, the movement of the monument and make a, uh, uh, move it to[1790.53] and make a, move it to that park as part of the project.
If I can follow up on that, actually, Jack. Does the deed on that property in the World of One Monument say it can be used for any town use, or does it have to be a park?
I'd have to get back to you on that. My understanding was that no, but I'll let Deputy Chief, I think, look into that, right?
Yes, there was no restrictions on the deed.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions?
Mike Murray, Lynn Lane. Our fire station doesn't owe us anything. You know, it doesn't. They deserve every new one, straight up. However, this proposal for Marsh Street, I just simply can't support it at all. I heard, we don't want to displace businesses, but I heard nothing about residents. No regard. I see a study, and I question the same as I've heard earlier, that 5.3 rating. Marsh Street is in the most dense neighborhood of all of the sites. I've heard about the school, a citizen brought that up, no one else brought that up. I heard about some narrow roads, and one of them happens to be on a snow emergency parking, no parking zone. You can't even alternate sides, you have to get off the road. It's narrow there, and that Y intersection, from a safety concern, it will require lights. And also, no one's brought this up, but the brook that's right there over Cohasse Street, we start putting more trucks there, and that bridge itself has had patchwork done to it over the years, and I question whether it's safe to have that many trucks going over it in that area. And as far as, in that neighborhood, that study says three, neutral to the residents. If it's in the most dense neighborhood, I question that it's neutral. And I really think that if you take a look at that chart and see that the first column for acreage is zero, which pretty much eliminates five sites, well, perhaps if you tweak your building plan, if you do other things, take another look at that, those sites might become more viable and higher in the ratings. Right now, I think the existing and Marsh Street are five points apart. Take a hard look at that, I think that the ratings would be a little bit closer, and other sites may have a little bit higher. And I've heard some other good points up here, and one of them was the process to building the school. And in that process to build the school, there were some great plans. It was a larger facility than what we have now. It's what, we wanted to bring kids back from school choice, and we wanted to plan for them. And outright in the end, the state said, no, you can't have this much money. This is what we have to do. It's not what we want to do, it's what we have to do. And I think we really need to look at the haves and not the wants. And something right now is better than nothing, because they certainly deserve something. Feasibility study as it stands, Marsh Street, I want to go back to the drawing board. I want to see what they can do. Putting it in a neighborhood, it's just not the right thing to do. If the fire department can use statistics such as the number of calls to fight for their staffing, well, then those same number of calls have to be used for consideration of the residents who live there and are gonna see these trucks with those doors opening up and those lights screaming and those lights flying and all the noise that are interrupting a neighborhood. Marsh Street, not the place. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions?
Ryan Servant, 40 Hillside Road. My comments are gonna be quick, and it's the staff of the Southbridge Fire Department. I'm embarrassed at how that station is. The fact that we have one shower for these guys, and men and women, is horrible. And so I'm just gonna say that I fully support us doing something and as quick as possible, because it's an embarrassment. These guys, men and women, work their tails off to keep us safe, and it's disgusting what they're doing and what they're dealing with. So again, thank you for the study so far, thank you for what you guys do, and good luck in making a decision, guys, because it's gonna be a hard one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any, Councilor Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, just one more thing, and it really will be quick. It doesn't matter what site it would be picked with the traffic here in Southbridge, downtown, North Street, Central Street, wherever you, there's always gonna be, even right here on Elm Street, getting out, I mean, you have traffic stuck at the lights and stuff. So, I mean, it's always an issue, and I'm sure that the engineers would be able to work around it somehow. And I look forward to, are there gonna be any public hearings on this?
Yes, I think the next step, and I just want to thank you for your time here tonight, the questions, I think they're very good questions, concerns. We welcome those. And yes, there'll be, we'll set up some public hearings so we can get some more additional feedback. I'll set up a meeting of our committee, and again, I really want to publicly thank my committee members for the hard work that they did over the last three years getting this, at least to this. I think this is, you know, we're a lot farther along than we were, I think, in 2000 for the conceptual design and a good, clear-cut plan. We look forward to working with you in the future. So thank you for having us here tonight. I appreciate it.
And Jack, is there a specific, like, email that people can email questions to for this project?
Yeah, on the website, they go to Deputy Chief and the chief, that they can ask the questions. And they really have, and thank you again to the chief and the deputy chief, Chief Norman and his new role and everything that he had to take upon, and especially Deputy Chief Hewlitt, working tirelessly on this presentation tonight. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And thank you very much for your guys' time and all the effort you put into it so far. It's only maybe what, a third of the way there. We've got a lot more work to do, so remember, as Councilor Adams says while I look back, that obviously all of you out here are paying attention. We appreciate the fact that you're paying attention to this and keep paying attention because there's a lot more stuff and a lot more comments that we're gonna need to hear from the citizenry to do the job right. So don't be afraid to contact the chiefs or any of us up here. All of our contact info is on the website as well, so. So are we done with this presentation, I think?
We're all done.
I think we are, okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your work and all that stuff, and I hope you have a great evening. And we will move on to item number eight, which is Citizens Forum. Sorry, now it's your turn. Now it's your turn. And I will hand the gavel back to Chairman Jovanov.
Now it's my turn, I guess. Yes, good evening, folks.
Just state your name again and your address under Citizens Forum.
My name is Bill Cody, and I'm from 243 Everett Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Southbridge. As I said, I would like to discuss some of the roads in Southbridge. In my early years, I did a lot of work building roads and maintaining them. I realized that we only allocated so much money from the state through Chapter 90 money, and you can only do so much with it. The Highway Department does a great job with the money that's allocated to them. You can only maintain the roads for so long. That's what they've been trying to do, but eventually, you gotta redo some of the roads. We need to knock off one or two of the roads a year while maintaining the rest, or else we're gonna end up with a bunch of very unsafe roads that are non-reparable. For example, Marsh Ave, which we've been talking about, that road is non-reparable. That road, I don't know if any of you guys have been down that in the past year or so, there is not a part of that road that is not a pothole that's been patched. There's a few other roads in town. Foss Street by the library, that's in rough shape. Dresser Street coming down the hill from the old school. I would normally take the road every day to go home, but it's so bad, I take Marsh Street down to Hartwell and avoid it. It's just been like that for years, and it's never been repaired. I'm sure many people in this town would agree with me, that the towns, roads in this town are the worst out of all the surrounding towns by far. The Highway Department has done their best. I can't say anything against the Highway Department, they've done their best, but we need to figure a way to help them out and get them more money to at least one or two of the roads a year. I mean, just get something done. And then to another subject, Main Street, the hill coming down to Cumberland's. That road was fine before we redid it. There was no light there. There's a light there now. Trucks, the big trucks are hitting their brakes, and the road is moving. In the summertime, the heat, the road moves. That's why you get your bumps. They had the same discussion in Charlton when they were doing the hill down to McDonald's, because that was happening there. But when they did the road, they discussed things, and they came up with concrete on the downward side. It's more stable, it doesn't move. Now, I hear the state is supposedly doing the road over this year on Main Street, and they're contemplating whether asphalt or concrete. I hope that people put their input in it that, you know, if we do it in asphalt, we're gonna have the same problem again in the next few years. So hopefully, we can get it done, you know, the way it should be done in concrete. It's more money, but the same thing we're talking about, maintenance of things, it'll be a lot less maintenance. You know, the hill in Charlton's been great since they've done the road, there's been no problems with it. I just want to say thank you for listening to my thoughts, and thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Cody, thank you for coming before us on those two issues. I do know that Council Adams, DPW, and Town Manager, we've been working on those very specific issues, especially the roads and Main Street. So yes, Main Street, we've had conversations with the DPW Director about concrete versus pavement. There's engineering being done on that road. We'll have to see what the engineering studies, but it is being addressed in that vein.
Has the state said anything? Are they--
It's a town road right there, so that would be us fixing that.
Oh, we're gonna have to--
So, yes, we are aware of that. On the other roads, the Town Manager had gone out for compact grant for a pavement plan. Council Adams was a big proponent of that. That pavement plan is in process. Also, we're talking in the budget process to try to see how our budget can go, because we have to balance all our needs, as possibly putting some money away to do that and fix certain parts of the road on a yearly basis and build it into the budget. So we're gonna take a look at all that.
Now, addressing the hill again, is there any way we can go back? You know, the state designed that, they paid to do that whole downtown and everything else on a grant, but they didn't take into consideration that. I mean, I've done other roads where they've thought about that. It's a steep hill, you get trucks hitting the brakes, hard to stop, and when it's hot in the summer, the pavement is alive. It moves. Is there anything, I mean, where we get the state to do something about that? I mean, there was their doings to begin with.
That, I won't answer, I'll defer that to the DPW, but your point is well-taken. We'll defer all that information to the DPW. I'll have an answer for you, I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any further citizens that wish to address the council? Any other citizens? Seeing none?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a recess?
Couple minutes?
Sure.
Reconvene, the Town Council meeting? Item nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Dwayne Ledoux as an auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, chief? No? Nothing? Okay. These two items, the nine and 10 were brought forward, the chief had requested it. They are full-time police officers that are retired and good standing from the police department, requesting to use them as auxiliary officers as he has with other offices. Is that correct, chief?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
They are qualified for the job?
Well, one has 31 years of service and one has 28, so I would say yes.
Thank you.
More than qualified.
And this had been vetted through Council of Manor to come directly to council without going through PPP due to the fact that they were employees in good standing and retired. That's why it did not go through PPP first.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion of the chief? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous vote, all present.
Thank you.
Vote to confirm the appointment of Michael Sullivan as auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous vote, all present. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Item 11, vote to ratify the commercial lease agreement between the Town of Southbridge, the Southbridge Municipal Airport, and Jim Demby for the Red Baron Diner.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
That was one of the things--
Yep.
That was one of the items on the last gen govern meeting agenda, and let's see if I can read my own scroll here, because I haven't typed it up yet. Okay, Town Manager briefly summarized it. We had talked a little bit about citing, we had some issues with citing section number 10 as having an unnecessary paragraph, and had asked that that be removed and be clarified with the Airport Commission. Did that ever go through, Mr. Manager?
The Airport Commission had not taken up that issue, that's why it's not in this section anymore. The Airport Commission is completely fine with the lease as it is right now.
Okay, so we had, it's, I'm concerned about that particular issue. Let's see, we had, okay, it was intended to be, that you had said it was intended to be amended, and we had changed it to be a new contract primarily because of the fact that most of us had never, had not seen the contract in some time, and the changes, we felt it made more sense to have it be a changed formal lease because of the fact that it had originally been a lease between us and two parties, and now it's just Mr. Demby. So we thought that that made some more sense, just to clarify that the other party is no longer, that we don't have any issues with them, and he doesn't have any issues with us, basically. So we did ultimately approve it, you know, recommend approving it unanimously.
Any further? Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Town Manager. Are there any considerations within this lease agreement to account for the sorts of concessions we've given in the past?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last card around?
Are there any conditions within this lease agreement that account for the sorts of concessions that we've given to other lessors or lesses in the past?
So essentially, it's the same agreement except for the one party instead of two. The other part of this lease that's changed is we are allowing them to close if they choose to, December, January, February, and March, because of the winter months. As counselors know, it's very difficult to run that business in the winter up there because the building is just not energy efficient in any way. Plus, the traffic at the airport declines considerably during the winter. So that is the one change in the provision here, is to allow them to close if they choose to. If they do, they don't have to pay rent for those four months, but if they do open, they have to continue paying rent. So it's their option.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Council Nash, are you reflecting opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, Council Nash is opposed. Motion carries. Item 12, vote the town waive its right of first refusal for a 13.89 portion of the total 48.66 acre of parcels, 026-003-A-0001, 301 Dresser Hill Road. This item was taken up at the last meeting on February 25, postponed indefinitely, and vetted through general government. I'll defer to Council Steve's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as we did, we did recommend, we talked about it at some length, and we did end up recommending it unanimously with the, because the concerns really had been, that was kind of, we had concerns, obviously, when we originally put it on hold up here, with Councilor Man and I had specifically had concerns about the development of solar projects, and this is, it's kind of a catch-22, because I don't personally really want to see that project developed, but at this point, it's so far along in the process, and any moratorium that we would put on it wouldn't apply to that project anyway, because it's already in the process. So, and we unfortunately don't have the money to buy it. So we did end up recommending that we send it back up here for reconsideration, and that's where we stand.
Council Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I do apologize, I wasn't able to make it to that subcommittee meeting because I was at work. However, I'm just like, I'm confused. When you have a property in 61A and they want to sell it, and shouldn't it come out of 61A before the project has already been started? That just doesn't make any sense to me. The project shouldn't be started and then come to us to take it out of 61A. It should be taken out of 61A first, before the project started.
Council Steve's?
I mean, I entirely--
I mean, I entirely agree with you. Um, a while back, um, a couple of us had taken a walk with the state forester.
Close up.
Can you hear me? Okay. A while back, a few of us had taken a walk with the state forester on a property that's here in town. And, uh, we had actually asked him those kinds of questions. And he had, and the concerns were, unfortunately, is that that's an area of the law that is probably going to end up in court if it hasn't already. Because this, the situation is that the, the solar developers are taking advantage of the fact that technically what they're doing is only on paper and therefore they're going through the process as if it's only on paper. Yet, they are assuming, of course, that their changes will make it so that the town can't afford to buy it. Um, and the, uh, and there are arguments with, from various communities already about how, that in fact, these, these kinds of projects are not legal on 61 land. However, the, the courts have yet to decide the way they should be organizing them. I agree with you completely that they should be taking it out of 61 before doing it. But unfortunately, the, it's something that'll probably be decided in the courts.
So I believe Charlton just went through something similar to this, um, a few months ago. They, they had some property in 61A, they already developed the solar and they took it out afterwards. So, and that just, it doesn't make sense to me, it never has, and, um, I believe the last property that we talked about over up by the industrial park across the street there, that, um, before anything was even considered to be developed, it, you know, it was, it came to us to be taken out of 61A. There was, somebody was just considering buying it.
Yeah.
And it came to us to take it out of 61A. And I know Will's at the podium. So maybe he can answer those questions.
Do you have anything expound, Mr. Assessor?
Yeah. Excuse me, I don't know what it is tonight, but we're all losing our voices.
Yeah.
Yeah, chapter 61, 61A, 61B says this. If a property is going to be changed to a non-qualifying use, the town, the municipality has a 120-day right of first refusal from the time they notified. Southbridge got notified on January 10th, which means we have, uh, 120 days would be May 10th, I believe. So, three things can happen. So, we can waive our right of first, well, the first thing is we can waive our right of first refusal expressly and at any time, that's what we've been asked to do. Or we can do nothing and in 120 days, uh, just by the matter of course of law, we waive our first, right of first refusal. Or we can purchase the property, uh, match a bona fide offer to purchase, or in this case, it's not selling, they're retaining the land, but they're putting the solar panels on it. We can buy it at its fair market value. By them putting the solar panels on, they don't even have to be there yet, but there's a, the approval's already been done, I believe, by the planning board. There's a potential lease in place, so the town could buy it, these, what is it, 14 acres, at the fair market value, which would be, I haven't done an appraisal on it, but it would be into, well into the mid-six figures for 13 acres of landlocked land in, on the, behind their house that abuts behind the school, which we're also putting, um, solar panels on. So, to answer your question, our rights are those three things only. We can buy it, we can do nothing and our right will expire in 120 days, or we can expressly, uh, you know, waive our right of first refusal.
So, to follow up on that, I get our rights. My question is, how come they, like, it's already planned, it's already a done deal, right? It's already a done deal, the, the solar, um, if we don't waive, if we, if we don't buy the property. How can that be? I guess that's my question. It's already been approved, it's already gone through the planning board process, now it's to us. I mean, if they want to sell their property, it should come to us first to take it out of 61A, you know, instead of going, this, to me, it's like circumventing the system and it's very sneaky.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
It's in 61A. They're asking us to exercise our right of first refusal to keep it and retain it in 61A.
No, they're asking us to waive our right of first refusal now.
To own the property, okay? But to buy the property. It's in 61A.
Right.
They're asking us to buy it and we do whatever we want. Oh, no, not ask us, waive our right to, to purchase it, we have a right to purchase it. It's in 61A. If we say no, is the next step, buy that, waive and it reverts to 61 something else? Or how does that work? I think that's the question of Counsel Manor as to the steps.
No, my question is...
You vote to, wait, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You have a 61A, town votes to turn it to 61A. And I'm just trying to understand the process because I've never gone through it. So is the process that it should have come back to the Town Council to take it out of 61A to change it to a different use or not?
No, if, if you table it or do nothing or vote no on it, we'll, our right of, uh, right of first refusal will expire on May 10th. So all, by you voting to waive our right of first refusal, all you do is accelerate it by 60 days for the local homeowners. Can, if I could, uh, in this case, we're talking about solar. Solar is a relatively new phenomenon in the last four, three, four, five years. Previously, these kind of things would be, the change of use would be a commercial or residential development. It's really the same thing. Um, but, so it would just delay the process by 60 days now.
So, Counsel Manor, if I could ask you a question? Your point, I think what I'm trying to understand is, your point is it comes to the town to change it to a 61A designation, correct?
No. My question was, how could the plan be approved when it was still in 61A? It should have been taken out of 61A before the plan was approved.
So my question is, does it come to the town to go into 61A?
Does it come to the town to go into 61A?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it has to go through a process because they have to be agriculture.
Right, what is that process here?
So when somebody applies to go into chapter 61, 61A, or 61B, um, if it's forestry, they have to submit a plan to, they have to have a forester devise a forestry plan, submit it to the state forester. If the state forester approves it, then they apply to the Board of Assessors. If it's approved, we have no choice but to accept it.
By the state, okay.
Yeah, the law says we have no choice but, choice but to accept it if it qualifies. And the law also says when, if they go to remove it from chapter 61A to change the use.
Okay.
Like in this case, three options. We can purchase it at fair market value, we can waive our right of first refusal, or we can do nothing and our right of first refusal will expire. Those are really our only three options.
And they don't have to go back to the state to get it out of 61A?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I recognize you and then Counsel.
Yeah, so, just so, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So everyone's clear, um, where my confusion lies is how can the planning board approve something for that property while it was still in 61A before it came to us to, um, exercise our right to first refusal? That's my question. And that's where the confusion lies and that's where I believe Counsel Steves and I agree that the solar companies and what you talked about, the other guy, the forestry guy or whoever you were talking to, said that this is gonna eventually end up in court. It just doesn't seem right that a plan can be approved on a property that's still in 61A before it comes to the Town Council to exercise its right to first refusal. That's all.
If I may, I'm not on the planning board, so I have no direct knowledge of that. Um, I brought, I brought this forward because it was brought to the Board of Assessors. Um, it's, the property's owned by two local homeowners, um, that's why I put it back on the agenda for you. If you elect to do nothing, that's your prerogative and it will, our right will expire in 60 days or Janu, on May 10th.
Yep. Okay, any further discussion? Counsel Steves?
Um, yeah, um, through you to Will. Um, Will, I mentioned earlier and Counselor Manor said earlier to the idea that might end up in court. Have you seen any court cases come down or any issue from court cases regarding 61A property in this kind of situation?
Not on this matter. There, there've been a few, there have been some things where somebody claims they can remain in chapter 61A and still put on the solar, solar panels. And by, well, in those cases where the panels might be higher and they might be grazing, livestock grazing underneath them and that kind of thing, those are the only cases I'm aware of.
But nothing about the, the timing of doing them that you've seen?
I've heard nothing about it, I don't know.
Okay, because I know that's, that's been an issue in multiple communities, so it's kind of a standard practice unfortunately for the solar industry at this point.
Counsel Petrow, did you have a question?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, in light of, um, us being just explaining the three choices, which seems pretty simple to me, and we have until May 10th, if there's any questions or concerns, I would recommend the council, uh, vote against, uh, waiving its right of first refusal. It's gonna come to fruition on May 10th anyways. And if somebody's got, uh, brainstorm between now and then, let's let it ride till then, would be my recommendation.
Counsel Steves?
Um, actually, we're, we're kind of talking about two different things here because you've got this specific property and Counselor Manor and I are really issue, are having a real issue with the broader picture of the way this kind, these kinds of properties are handled. Unfortunately, I think we're in a situation where, yes, we could just let it lapse. However, it doesn't really make any sense to let it lapse because we know we don't have the money to buy it. And that's kind of the only, it's kind of the catch 22 that, that is really unfortunately our only option is either, unless, unless you know somebody who's willing to, to grant us 600,000 or a million bucks or whatever the cost would be. I don't know what it is, but, um, the ability to buy these properties, it would be nice if we had that chunk of change to do it. But unfortunately, we have seen these kinds of properties come forward for other 61A conversions that we couldn't buy either, for the same reasons, that we don't have the money. Um, I wish we did, but I don't see any point in this particular property being dragged out any farther. But we definitely need to fix the whole 61A solar timing thing. I don't know if we can do that at the town level or if we have to start putting pressure on our legislature to change those rules the way they're written. I think that's probably a Boston thing rather than so much, more so than us. Um, but I don't see any reason why we should hang this up at this point, despite the fact that I don't like the idea of solar going there.
Any further, Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'll be brief. I can certainly appreciate the prospective opinions and the questions asked by counselors Manor and Steves tonight in regards to the 61A process and this circumstance in particular. I don't disagree. And, um, I will say this isn't the first time that we've encountered this sort of scenario where we get the option to vote on right of first refusal. I concur with Counselor Steves that it does not do us any good to delay this, or to delay this. All we do is play politics at that point, it's time to just take the vote and let this particular set of residents move on. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We are voting on, on waiving our rights of first refusal.
Right, vote town waive its right of first refusal. All those in favor of waiving the right of first refusal? Opposed? Let's get that, Counsel Petrow opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Vision, Vision Appraisal Technology, Vision of Northborough, Mass. for rail property revaluations, revaluation services for fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $59,000 in subsequent interim years on a per diem basis rate of $1,000 per diem. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Steves?
Um, that was also at the last GenGov meeting, um, with Will making the, most of the presentation. Um, this was, this is something that we originally had to do every three years. Um, the state's municipal modernization, the Modernization Act changed it to five years. We're kind of in an interim phase, we're actually doing it every four years and then next year, next time we're around, we'll do it every five years. Um, and so, the state has also said that the interim years will have to be a little, still be a little more stringent than they used to be, but they're still not as much of a, of a hassle as the regular, the whole, the big, big spiel that we have to do. Um, so, um, on Thursday, uh, the Thursday prior to the meeting, the bid was opened. Vision was, uh, did our, had done our appraisal, reappraisals the last two cycles, um, and they were the only bidder. The per diem, uh, Will said that the per diems should not exceed more than $6,000 a year. They usually only do two or three days for those intermediate years. But it also includes the ability, if somebody should appeal their assessment, then they come in and do another per diem that way. They budgeted $35,000 a year to cover the revale and interim years. Um, if I'm clarifying, so you, you put aside $35,000 a year to cover revale, knowing that you're gonna do, you're gonna lump some spend it in like five years.
Exactly.
Right? Okay. And so, the, the company's got more than 100 clients, they've got, um, and, uh, we had approved it unanimously.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. Vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Real Estate Research Consultants, RRC, of North Andover, Mass. for personal property revaluation services for fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $24,680 in interim year adjustments for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $10,400, fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $10,400, with the town retaining its option to renew this contract on an annual basis for fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024. Is there a motion? Motion, second? Motion and second. Discussion, Counsel Steves?
Um, this is also a GenGov, and just to clarify, that last thing was specifically for real estate? This is specifically for business property, um, the stuff that, that businesses use on a daily basis. It does it also, does it also include like householders' property and things like that or is it just business property? Because it is called personal property, but...
You asked a question, so I'll answer it. In the state of Massachusetts, all property, all personal property includes, including residential property is taxable unless specifically exempted. So what's the first exemption is all of the property in your personal domicile. So everything in a house is, is exempt. If this was Stirbridge or Webster where you have lake houses and second homes, that property in those houses is taxable.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That's good to know, I didn't know that, thank you. Um, so anyway, we did rec, we did recommend approval unanimously. And this is the same contractor we've used for 20 years.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Vote to approve the new hiring process for the fire department, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics. This was, this was postponed to this meeting on the February 25th, 2020 meeting. Motion?
Second.
Second? Motion second, Chief?
Uh, this has been a project, as the council chair has said, for the last couple of months. Uh, this process is now in black and white. Uh, it's vetted through the PPP committee. Thank you everybody for your comments and concerns and rewrites and rewrites. Um, but I think this is a good document and we'll move forward with, uh, the other promotional processes, uh, set in stone in the next few months.
Just this, uh, conversation, I do know, I reviewed this with Counsel Manor last week, just to let her know that I thank the Chief, uh, for some of the, allowing me to, uh, give some input. Couple of things just to note on the prior, uh, hiring process, on where it's under purpose, with the timeline, the timeline previously was embedded within the, uh, it was underneath background investigations, I think, at that time, uh, or right in the middle. So we moved that to the front because it made sense that, uh, the document should establish at the beginning what the timeline for the rest of the process was gonna be. So that was just a simple move within the document. It was actually, yeah, above conditional offer employment, moved it to the front because it made sense. Second change that was made, uh, in consultation with the Chief, with input from Counsel Manor, based on the last meeting, was relative to the Town Council review and confirmation, uh, the input from Counsel Manor that, to her point that it's not required that it goes to PPP, it's recommended, it's a process that we have. So, that, uh, first, so the head in was moved, um, actually, uh, this is a whole separate, uh,
Paragraph Town Council Review and Confirmation because it was embedded within conditional offer of employment. Because we do not issue a conditional offer of employment to a firefighter until it's been vetted through council. So it didn't, it didn't belong in that conditional offer of employment. So Town Council Review and Confirmation, the vetting process, then Town Council Confirmation of Employment as required through the Town Charter. So that was a separate paragraph. And then under conditional offer of employment, the only addition there was upon confirmation of employment by the Town Council that was added. Okay? And then the last change that we reviewed was conversation about the eligibility list. Originally, the language simply said that, I think it said, upon completion of the process, a list of potential candidates will be made after this process had been completed. Well, if you look through that document after I reread it, process meant the whole thing about conditional offer of employment and physical and PAT. But some candidates may not go through that. So it was changed to a list of potential candidates will be made of those remaining candidates that are qualified for hiring and had not been selected for confirmation to reflect the fact that that list would be in place and a list of qualified for hiring candidates will be valid for not more than one year period. So reviewed it with the Chief, back and forth. So I think we addressed all the concerns that councils had made at the last meeting. Correct, Chief?
That's correct. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you for the work, all involved. Just a question on page three.
Yep.
Thirty percent down the page. I wonder why, while everything else reads as sentences or appropriate bullet points, the statement Town Council Confirmation of Appointment as Required Through the Town Charter ends in a period like it's a sentence where it's really something that could either be in parentheses or formed into a sentence.
Yeah, I apologize. That was something I did. If you want me to take it off the ground, I apologize, so, yeah.
And you know I'm a stickler for silly little things like that, but this is for posterity. I'd like to see it amended if we're going to vote on it.
What, what, do you want it done to it?
Either make it a sentence and replace as with is, or just put the entire statement in parentheses perhaps.
Where, where are you?
No, it is a statement. It is a statement. It's because Town Council Confirmation of Appointment as Required, because that is a step, that is required. So it is a step. So it's a two-step process, so it's, so...
I'm thinking more in the terms of usage and grammar.
Okay.
It's not a sentence. That's all, Jack.
Okay. All right. We'll take the period out. Okay. Thank you. I apologize for missing that.
So are we taking the period out? Is that what it's going to end up being?
Yeah.
See, I do read my material, even if I'm not here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor as amended?
No, no, look, I got...
Oh, yep.
You go too fast.
Oh, sorry.
So I guess we could, under Town Council Review and Confirmation, the sentence of, well, the part that Counsel Nash is talking about, you could put the or...
Put what?
The Town Council upon approval of the Town Council, or you can just like add a word or something.
I suggest...
It is required, so...
Oh, is.
Yeah, it makes it...
Oh, did you, did we vote on that to get, did, did you make that change? Is that what we're voting on?
What do you want, just tell me what you wanted to read. What, what is it? Counsel Nash, how did you have it?
Town Council Confirmation of Appointment is required through the Town Council.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
Change it to is. Okay. Thank you. Any further? Do you have anything further?
I just, you know, making that change because Counsel Nash wouldn't have supported it.
No, that's fine.
So I, I think it should be of the full body and we should make that change.
Any further questions? All those in favor as amended to add the word is. Opposed? Unanimous all present. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item 16, vote to repeal parking permit number 00072 Pleasant Street, the no parking in front of McKinnon Training Center dated 5/21/1998. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Counsel DePietro?
Mr. Chair, just not to be, well, stop myself from being redundant for agenda items 16 through 24, all of these items were discussed in length at the last DPW Subcommittee and all of the above, unless I'm mistaken, were approved unanimously by Subcommittee members.
They were. Correct. Counsel, Steve?
Just a quick question. I was, I was obviously at GenGov at that time and I came in later. So why, why do they want to do this? Just a quick summary.
I'll speak to that. That's better. Good evening. So there were two parking, two no parking permits for the section of Pleasant Street around the entrance to McKinnon Trainin', Training Center.
Right.
At some point when it was no longer a school, they were no longer needed. One was repealed and the other, it just, there should have never been two in the first place.
Okay.
They should have both been repealed. This is housekeeping.
Okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. Item 17, vote to approve the repair on private portion of way known as Litchfield Avenue or as known as the private portion of Oak Street, which is a continuation of Litchfield Avenue in accordance with the private road bylaws section 8-102. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Counsel DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heather did tell us that this was going to be somewhere in a $500 neighborhood.
That's a max.
No more than 500.
Max.
And that's just to purchase some materials, probably just some gravel to fill in that road. It is a dirt road there. It's heavily washed out near the entrance to a culvert that travels from that area to near the West Street School. It needs it badly and we were petitioned to, to help them.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. 18, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and John W. Kennedy Company in the amount of $13,035.08 for the purchase of SmartFill Gen 2 Fuel Management System to be funded from the DPW Fuel System Upgrade Capital Account. Is there a motion? So moved. Second. Second. All those, any discussion? Counselor Steve?
Again, this was, this was before I got there, so if you don't mind giving a quick explanation for what this is.
Sure. So a few months ago, we lost our ability to encode keys. We know, what we've known, we needed a new system for fuel management. This is how everybody in-town vehicles fills up their town vehicles at the DPW station. I went out for three quotes and the bottom line is this SmartFill system doesn't have a yearly subscription fee. It's, you can get additional features if you pay, but we don't need those additional features. And if you extend this out by five or 10 years, it becomes the cheapest solution. So that's why we are recommending it. It also, John W. Kennedy, which is the one we're recommending, is supplier only, so we've had to go out for an install quote from a second company. That's included in the bottom line comparison here.
Okay. And also, Matt, just a quick question. Okay. So does this, does this facility, does this device actually track who's using fuel and how much they use and...
Yes. Each employee will get their own FOB and each vehicle will have its own FOB. When they go to fill up, they'll use their employee and their vehicle FOB, so it'll know who's filling it and what vehicle they're filling and be able to track it that way.
Okay.
It's, it's the same as the system that we have, just a new version of it, less error-prone, less maintenance required, less time-consuming for me. If I don't download it every week, we run the chance of getting a call from the police in the middle of the night that they can't fill up their vehicles or the fire. So we'd like to address this as soon as possible.
Okay.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Town Engineer. Matt, I'm wondering if you could just refresh my memory, did, when you presented these options for this system and the installation to the DPW Subcommittee, were they separate items for procurement and for the contract for installation?
When I went out for quotes, I asked for both the supply of the equipment and the, and the installation. Unfortunately, I, the third company that I contacted is a supplier. They do supply, they do equipment and service only. They don't do install. I had to hound them for a quote. I don't, I'd rather not go with them. I'm, I'm suggesting them because it seems like the best, the best solution monetarily for the company.
Thank you. The reason I ask is, I know I made my statement during Subcommittee about not being particularly fond of the option, but you know, upon further consideration, now we have two parties involved where the other quotes, the other options may have been a little bit more long-term, but initially now we have a contract with a third party to install equipment that they didn't provide. So if there's any issue along the way, where's the finger get pointed? That's my concern. It's not that I'm not going to support you on this, but I don't like it. I just think that it opens the door for more headaches that you don't need because you and the department are extremely busy. I'd like to see it go smoothly. I hope that's the way it goes, but I just want it on the record that I don't think that's the best way we could go about this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. Vote to allocate, the 19, vote to allocate the amount of $1,850 from the DPW Fuel System Upgrades Capital Account for the installation of a new SmartFill Gen 2 Fuel Management System as quoted by and to be installed by DM3 Petroleum Services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion? This was unanimous at DPW. Any, say none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous all present. Item 20, vote to appropriate $75,000 from sewer retained earnings to the sewer collection system, account number 600 dot 40, 440 dot 5203 dot 0 dot 571, operation and maintenance account for unanticipated repairs to the multiple pump station.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I know Heather gave us a good brief on this as to the repairs and the reason for it or fully support it.
We've, we've had a rash of problems with pump stations that have driven our costs well over what we have typically spent, which has been in the range of $19,000 to $25,000 per year. We're already up to 50-some thousand.
Right.
And we have upcoming costs that we know of already and this money, this money can only be used for the collection, collection systems.
Yeah. Counsel Steves?
I'm going to add a quick question to you, to Matt. I'm just curious, you, from, from looking, looking at the issues that you've been having, do you see any common grounds, commonalities between them, say, for example, in the original supplier of the equipment or anything like that, that we can, that we can track and see what, what's actually going on here?
The, the common, the common thing is age. All of our equipment is very aged and we're starting to experience more and more failures. Hopefully, this is an aberration and it won't continue into future years, but we have a lot of aging equipment that's obsolete and needs to be replaced and is beginning to fail.
And I want to follow up on that is, so is there actually a, like a timeline for replacing some of these pump stations going forward?
Yes. We do have replacement of pump stations and several components of the pump stations in our capital plans.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just wanted to clarify one thing, although we're approving the 75,000, one thing that was brought up was the fact that DPW has already owed a bill for about 10, or behind about $10,600. So we'd actually be, within that account, we'd go to about $65,000 to pay the bill first.
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I guess I'm, I'm just like, my main concern is just looking at the historical account trend down here at the bottom, left-hand corner. We've like, we're, we're at $50,695.30 for the repairs. We're at $46,000, $46,445?
If you add repair and maintenance, it's about 50.
So we are at the $50,690, so we're at $51,000.
Yeah, that's already spent and there are other known future costs that we've already, we've already basically spent that money, but we just haven't gotten the bills yet.
Okay. But last year, we only, it was at $25,000, $246. So we're at nearly, we are at double. We're just a little bit over double.
Yes.
And we're still going.
We, we still have several months left in the year.
And then in 2017, it was only at 20,000. And then at 2016, well, almost at 20, and then 2016, we're at 20. But now, 2019, we're in 2019, we're already double, over double.
Yes. If we could have put off the failure of the equipment, we would have, but it's...
But it's just like, that's, that's, that's huge.
It, it is. It's...
And I don't understand, I, I know you're telling me age, but did it all just age overnight and double? I'm just like...
We just unfortunately can't choose when things fail and this is, I think it's, I think it's more chance than anything, but it is indicative of a, of an aging infrastructure.
Right. So I, I, I just, I'm just confused, well, I'm not confused, I'm like concerned, very concerned. And are there any programs, preventative maintenance programs in place for these stations?
Yes, they absolutely do preventative maintenance on them. Some of these systems are just so old they've been, some of them, they kind of scab together one functioning pump from two that have some parts that are working and just the overall deferred replacement of this equipment is the reason why, not, not lack of preventative maintenance, but deferred replacement is the reason.
So do you have records of like last year for, for like the preventive, people go out and they check the pump stations and stuff? I mean...
Yeah, I'm sure I could request that from the sewer manager.
I'm just like, I mean, because if these were the concerns back in 2018, if something was noticed in 2018, then it should have been brought to our attention. You know, I, I'm just like, I have a huge concern because we're asking for 75,000, we're on, we're over double. I mean, how do we know you're not going to come back and ask for more?
We don't know for sure, but we sure hope that this is enough to get us through the rest of the year.
I'm just like...
We think it's more than enough.
That's a huge concern, so...
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I appreciate Counsel Manna's concern for the trend, but I'll also say that I applaud the Sewer Department, the engineering at DPW for the aggressiveness the last year or so, especially with the advent of the new generator, I think it's on South Street. They are trying to pay attention, but some of these failures are, they are actually predictable down the line, but with aging equipment, problems in the infrastructure aren't just aging equipment, it's people flushing stuff down the toilets that don't, don't belong down the toilets. It's, it's wipes. And I'm certain that within the procurement process, the bid process of getting a new vendor for the sewer treatment plant, we will make sure that we have a continued emphasis on preventative maintenance. However, I'm not surprised that it's only 46 of $51,000 at this stage. We have old equipment. Remember that if it wasn't this council, it was the past council that approved monies for the Water Department to improve controls at the pump stations that essentially, if you equate them to radios in cars 30 years ago, we were using something that had those old push buttons in the dials on the sides. All right? They had pots. They had components you couldn't replace. Our stations were neglected. This is tip of the bucket, folks. All right? We better start addressing it now. So I, I'm glad that they are finding the failures. I'm sorry that we're having them, but we better start paying attention to them. And this is, this is a no-brainer. We don't have a choice in this matter, in my opinion. Thank you.
Counsel DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counsel Nash, almost hitting on the head. I just wanted to respond to Counsel Manna's concerns by paraphrasing Heather, actually. One standby generator, a couple pumps, I mean, $75,000 is like that. I mean, she's just trying to put a war chest together and, and certainly represented her concerns to Subcommittee and, and this is really bottom of the barrel. I agree with Counsel Nash. This is, this is just preparation. Essentially, words described to Subcommittee. Thank you.
Counsel Manna? Did you have a call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, again, the trend from the past years and the, how, how it just like doubled is, is a huge concern. And if we're just putting, I mean, we, we had to, if we're just putting Band-Aids on, on the problems and not actually fixing them, then we're going to find ourselves in another situation like at the sewer for the, the sewer treatment plant, just putting Band-Aids on the situation. So perhaps we need to really find some money during the budget process to address the problems here. Because we don't want to come to the taxpayers in a couple of years or the next Town Council, whoever's on council, and, and tell them, guess what? We got to fund $2 million or whatever the, the cost could be. You know? Like the surprise that came to us for, well, it really wasn't a surprise, but it kind of was, you know? So, I mean, when people say they don't want their taxes raised, well, nobody wants their I mean, when people say they don't want their taxes raised, well, nobody wants their taxes raised, but if you don't raise them, you know, appropriately throughout the year, and, and all of a sudden, all these issues come, you know, and then, then you're going to just like, boom, hit them with that big tax bill, I mean, but this has got to be addressed, so, that's all, it's, it's, it's a very, it's very concerning to me.
Yep, and my notes, because I took the minutes for Counselor DePietro, the $75,000, anything that's not expended would go back to the retained earnings account, she stated that she should be good at 40,000 based on historical trends, but based on the fact that not knowing what might transpire, she just wanted to make sure of 75,000 for the remainder of the year, but anything else would go back to retained, returned, retained earnings at the beginning of the year were 1.5 million, we had spent 187,000 for electrical upgrades, so we have more than enough money in the retained earnings, so that was her recommendation to make sure we get through the rest of the year, but just as a point of information.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
One more quick question. Matt, do you have a rough estimate of, of how much overall cost the, the pump station system needs?
Needs?
In terms of, of bringing up to the, the standards that we would actually expect the system would be running at?
No, I don't know if we have that in general, but it's something that we could put together.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Dan?
Through you. How old are these pump stations?
The, they're old. At least, I believe South Street is 70, is from the 70s, Dennison Crossroads, or Dennison Drive is another one of the ones that's cost a lot of money, I believe that's also 70s or 80s, these are, these are old pump stations.
So they run all the time?
Yeah.
They don't shut off?
I mean, they intermittently, yeah.
Right. These are, this is the original equipment?
With some modifications and...
So they're falling apart, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 21, vote to approve the transfer of $26,100 from Water System Capital Reserve Fund, 610.450.5830.0.9125 to Capital Technical Support Account number 610.450.5830.0.19583, account to allow for Phase 1 of the cybersecurity upgrades to be completed in FY 2009.
Discussion? Counselor Adams?
Aren't we missing paperwork here for this? I know this is the end result, didn't we have something else with this before, during the subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, there's a cybersecurity report by Woodard and Carr.
There's a report? All right, just checking, I mean, I know, I got an idea what it says, but maybe those that weren't there...
It has a budgetary estimate for a bunch of different recommended cybersecurity upgrades, and the highest priority ones have been included in this transfer. Any of this money that doesn't get spent, 10% of it, I believe, gets given back to Charlton as part of the IMI.
Counselor Dan?
Again, thank you, through you. Can you tell me why the antivirus and disaster recovery items weren't considered to be high priority?
I can't, I don't know specifics of this, this cybersecurity, I wasn't part of this discussion, sorry.
That was Steve Gregor, Gregor, right?
Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just trying to answer Counselor Daniels. That was in the survey itself, I thought, not the survey, but the study itself, right?
It was, yeah.
There's, so we're missing, that's why I'm asking, there was a whole study done on this whole thing, so I'm not sure, have the explanation in it, so...
So, I apologize, I, I don't remember that question being raised, I don't have it in my notes, do you recall that, what did you leave by then?
What do you remember?
Yeah, I don't remember, I do know that the, originally it was to get at least the equipment upgraded, the laptop computers, the security software.
Mr. Chairman, I do seem to think that this document was something that Heather and Steve had presented, not the consultant, so these priorities were established.
They were established by them.
And I do remember a comment that I made after reviewing this in subcommittee, that I had confidence they made good choices, so I'm comfortable with the presentation here.
Yeah, and I think we could follow up with Heather, to make sure that whatever else has to be addressed, make sure that they get it to us as soon as possible and filter it out, because I know a portion of this was the laptop computers, addressing that. Yeah, so, Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not computer savvy by any stretch of the imagination, but what I got out of it was, plain and simple, the new equipment, Counselor, is going to be dedicated specifically for monitoring these systems, you can't do anything else with it, and that in itself is what makes it a secure... So viruses supposedly will not have an opportunity to, to come in, because it's not going to be used for any other purpose other than monitoring, they're going to be dedicated, that one piece of equipment, the way I understood it.
Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, I don't know if, I don't know if you can answer, if somebody else down here can answer, I was curious, the thing that jumps out at me is connected external applications, utility cloud, does this mean that the, that the, our water department's information is going to be stored on the cloud, or are we storing it locally? Because if it's on the cloud, that seems to be like hack central, so...
The connection to util, so Utility Cloud is the asset management program and work order program that we have, that we use on the, the collections or the distribution side of things, the water mains, hydrants, all of that stuff. I'm not sure what the benefit of, of hooking the DMZ server up and SCADA server, SCADA system up to that is potentially just to make work orders or, or something to that effect, but the reason why that connection would carry such a cost would be to make sure that it's, it's done in a way that's, that's secure.
So, so to clarify then, so are we storing our information on the cloud or in the server locally?
Not the SCADA stuff, this is just work orders and stuff, general day-to-day, day-to-day work orders and information about, about customers and stuff like that.
I'll definitely make sure we follow, unfortunately, the DPW director is on a well-earned vacation, so as soon as she returns, we can follow up with her and get an answer for that and do whatever we need to do, but we'll take this first step. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 22, vote to approve the transfer of $17,960 from Water System Capital Reserve Fund, 610.450.5830.0.9125 to Capital System Account, 610.450.5830.0.19580, to allow all three of the non-SCADA controlled pump stations to be upgraded in FY 2019.
Discussion? Counselor Steves?
Given the discussion that we had earlier about the conditions of our pump stations, if, if we're doing this now, will it be able to be transferred over to a new pump station?
So, these are the water booster stations, they're not as, not as in dire need as the sewer pump stations, there are, I believe, seven booster pump stations throughout the distribution system, and three of them are currently not connected to the SCADA system, which communicates back to the water filter plant, and, and the, and the water workers can, can see that information, right now, these, if there's a problem, it calls them on the phone, instead of going into the SCADA system, and this would allow us to upgrade those to be integrated into the SCADA system.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, just a comment that if folks haven't been able to see it, this is actually an amount to make up the difference that would be required to accomplish improving these three stations, as the document points out, we've already budgeted $40,000 this year, this extra $17,960 allows us to finish all three of them. Thank you.
And according to my notes, it's old technology, it's a dial-up system, better flexibility, it's already been designed because of the other prior work that was done, and we had already had $40,000 in the systems account, looking to do all three at the same time, because it just made sense to do all three, so that was the notes for that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present.
Vote to accept the small bridge grant for Ashland Avenue Bridge over Lebanon Brook in the amount of, am I on the right one? Nope, yep, I'm on the right one, it's been a long night, right? In the amount of $500,000.
Discussion?
Just what the project is, Matt?
Ashland Ave over Lebanon Brook, it's a bridge in terrible repair, according to Mass dot inspection reports, we applied, Ty &amp; Bond helped us prepare a grant application for the municipal small bridge grant program, we got the maximum yearly allotment for any municipality of half a million dollars, the budgetary estimate is somewhere in the range of $900,000 for both construction and engineering of this bridge, the remainder will be made up with Chapter 90 funds, but the grant will get us started.
And Matt, this was the max on the grant that you could get, correct?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah, just a quick question, so if you're, so you said that this is max, maxed us out for the year, do you already have other bridges lined up to supply for the small bridge grant?
After this round of grants, we also submitted one for Elm over Cohassie.
Okay, cool.
Any further discussion? Counselor Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, how much should you say the bridge was going to cost in total?
The budgetary estimate, I believe, is around $900,000.
And, and you said that Chapter 90 funds would help cover?
Cover the remainder, yes.
So the 400?
Yes.
So the $400,000 we get from Chapter 90?
Yes.
Is going to go towards this bridge? And not towards any repairs?
Yes.
Of the much needed, desperately needed?
Yes.
So...
There's no alternative, this bridge needs to be replaced or, or repaired, depending on the engineer's judgment, hopefully, it will not cost $900,000, that's a, that's an estimate with contingency, hopefully, it will come in well under that, and we won't have to use 400,000 of Chapter 90 funds, which is most of a, which is most of a year.
No, and I, and I get that, I just, and this is, you know, it's just a concern, so we just need to tap our legislatures and we just need to tell the governor, I mean, the governor one year did give us extra money for the Chapter 90 money, but it's still, that we, we just need to make those phone calls or something, we have to put it out to them, another formula needs to be devised or something, because we're suffering, you know, not only us, but many other communities, and now we're going to be taking much-needed road money to repair one bridge that the state is telling us that we need to repair, but guess what, we're only going to give you $500,000 to do it, yeah. Okay, I'm done with my rant.
Point well taken, I drive all over the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and by no means is the town of Southbridge any different than a lot of those roads.
Oh, no, I get it.
And, and the Commonwealth, it's just, the, the state and the federal government has to step up and do something, because the roads everywhere are terrible, so I feel for everyone, so, Counselor Steves?
So if, if we do end up having to use 400 grand for this project of Chapter 90 funds, how will that affect other projects that are already in the planning phases, things like South Street and wherever?
We, we currently have over $2 million in Chapter 90 reserves, we like to keep a reserve so that we can, so that we can move forward on projects such as this when they arise. So it won't affect those projects, we, we have that in reserve.
So is that, does that mean that South Street is actually moving forward, where are we actually going to see some work come in?
Not South Street, to my, to my knowledge, Main Street...
Yeah, I know Main Street's in process, yeah. Okay.
I believe Counselor Steve, South Street's a multi-tiered issue, because you have the water line that has to be replaced, so it's a two-tiered, so... I think it's a longer, longer fix. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 24, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Ty &amp; Bond in the amount of $224,800 for engineering services proposed, souls for design of Ashland Avenue Bridge associated with the small bridge grant.
Discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Did you, are you...
Actually, Mr. Chairman...
Did you have discuss, oh, did I rush it?
If, if you wouldn't mind if we do roll call on $220,000 contracts, and also, I may ask for reconsideration for roll call on appropriation on item number 20, since it was appropriation.
All right.
But I'll handle this at first, I voted in the affirmative if that was...
So you want a roll call, roll call, Mr. Secretary?
For which one, sir, number 20?
Number 24.
24. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Mann?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. And the appropriation vote of 20, want to make a motion to reconsider?
Move to reconsider number 20.
Is there a second to reconsider?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of reconsideration of item 20? Unanimous, all present. Motion is here to reconsider, is it for the purpose of just a roll call vote, Counselor Nash? Could just run the roll call on the approval to appropriate $75,000?
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Mann?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Seven yes on number 20.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I thank you for that, usually I do that on the appropriations, just...
It's on my mind, I would have pointed it out.
Okay, vote to accept, 25, vote to accept the town of Southbridge social media policy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Steves?
That also came up at GenGov and...
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt, that also came up in GenGov at the last meeting, Ron mentioned that it mostly came from Hanson, we kind of tweaked it a little bit, he said he tweaked it to make it more specific to Southbridge. And one of the things that Denise mentioned, brought up, is that some violations of some of these things could be grounds for removal for appointed person, appointed people from committees or, or people on staff, and that we, we kind of talked a little bit about some of the, some of the differences between elected officials and their, and, and, you know, our own personal Facebook pages, if we have some, and that using the town Facebook pages, which is something different, and that, you know, we, we could theoretically post whatever we want on our own pages, and probably shouldn't make ourselves look stupid, but, but the town's Facebook page is something a little different, so, and that's pretty much what this is, what this was covering, those, those are the other social media issues that we sometimes see too much of, unfortunately, and it was unanimously approved.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Unanimous, all present. Item 26 will be postponed to the next meeting. 27, Counsel's Forum, style with Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have one item tonight, just to say that Meals for Wheels and the Cazepon Senior Center are sponsoring a dinner and auction on March 21st at 6 o'clock, tickets are $15, it's a wonderful cause, it's citizens helping citizens, it's Southbridge citizens helping Southbridge citizens, and I ask you to support it if you can at all, thank you.
Thank you, anything further? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, just want a quick note, thank the Fire Station Building Committee again for a great presentation, which is the start of it, and thank you again for all the hard work over the last few years, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor DePietro?
No, thank you, other sitting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick things tonight, to echo the sentiments ahead of me here, thank you to all of those that were involved with the Fire Station Building Committee, and Chief Normandin, Deputy Chief Hulick, I appreciate the effort and the good work, and I don't want to sound at all negative, I want it done right, when it does come to fruition, and one thing that we kind of heard, but we didn't spend much time elaborating on, is it isn't just about the dollars to spend and the site location, it's about the needs of the firefighters to protect their health and welfare, there is a dramat, there has been a dramatic increase from what I've heard and seen, and from what I've learned from firefighters in other communities, as well as here, when I've spoken with the chief and the deputy, in types of cancers and their exposures to carcinogens based on materials that are in domiciles these days, so let's not lose sight of that fact, we need to give them what they need, not only for what's best for the community, but for their health and welfare, they put themselves at risk every day to make sure that we're safe, so I appreciate that very much. The only other thing I'm going to say tonight is I appreciate that majority of the council has stepped up where I haven't been able to attend recently, I started a new job which requires some travel, and I have recently been married, so I've been away a little bit due to that, so I appreciate your understanding, I will endeavor to make sure I give my best effort, as I have always tried to do in the past, and I look forward to continuing the rest of the year, getting through the budget season successfully, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, I, I'd like to thank the, the Fire Building Committee and everyone who, I, I, I didn't go to any of those meetings, I've just heard the updates, it was a very good presentation here tonight, I do know, I've been in that firehouse a few times, and I do know that they are in desperate need of something, I do not believe that it should be at that location, I should, I believe it should be a brand-new building. I should, I believe it should be a brand-new building. They deserve it, they need it. And the locations that I saw on the study, it just made more sense to me for Marsh Ave. Down North Street made no sense at all, Central Street, I mean, it does, but you know what? Ultimately, no matter where the location's going to be, there's always going to be an issue with the traffic, and that's like I stated earlier, coming out of the fire station that we have now, I mean, there's congestion there at times too, at those lights and everything. If you put it on Central Street, I mean, it's just, it doesn't matter, there's going to be a traffic issue no matter where you are, and that's why they have the engineers to, who will be able to design that and work around that. Also, just as a reminder, when we're up here in town council, no matter if we're counselors or the town manager, every time we go on our cell phones, I looked at mine a couple of times tonight just to look at the time, but every time we're on our cell phones, we're texting or whatever, that could become part of the public record, so I just want to make that clear. And nine more days till spring. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Man. Just a quick follow-up to my two colleagues. Thank you for your comments on the fire station, and your point is well taken, Counsel Nash. I don't think we spent a lot of time on the cancer issue, it is huge. I think anybody that, you just have to think about, you go to a fire, your truck is contaminated with all the, I mean, you take a look at Main Street and the fire that was there and all the fire, the smoke, the soot, everything went onto the fire trucks, onto the firemen, and they bring those fire trucks back into the small bays adjacent to the kitchen of where they're living. I mean, and that's, that's the crux of, I think, one of the things that we're looking to address, so thank you for bringing that point out, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a whole lot, but I do want to mention, for those of you that care, that Thursday is Pi Day, so if you are into the mathematics, you can do something with that. And on Thursday, sorry, on Wednesday evening at 7:00, the Historical Society is doing a presentation on the history of Hyde Manufacturing Company, so maybe you can learn something from the fires, from the fire station project from there. So that'll be going on at 7:00 PM at the Arts Center here in Southbridge. And they also have a couple of other programs over the next, over the course of the next, they do a monthly program. The April program is on taverns and tavern life in early New England, and May, they're talking about a lamplighter's life and early street lighting in America. So if you're interested in local history, there's all kinds of interesting things down there. And that was pretty much all I had. So the next, our next meeting is going to be March 25th at 7:00 here in the chambers, and it will feature, among other things, a budget presentation, so.
Thank you. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe you know the answer to this, but I don't recall it being discussed during the presentation earlier, but are copies of these available for the public anywhere? Because if not, I'm offering mine up, I'm one of the few that can actually download that huge PDF.
I know we, I believe we have one in the Town Hall, and we'll see if we get one. There's one at the fire station, obviously, and I'll see about getting extra copies, maybe at the library, at the library, like we normally do. Thank you for that point, I appreciate it. I know there was an extra, a couple of extra copies, because they printed 10, I think, for all the council, but we downed a couple, so, thank you. Thank you for that point, point well taken. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you and have a good evening.